Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 22nd, 2017 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We like to call this meeting the "Aldo." First item on the agenda would be public participation.
There is no one that has signed in with the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of May 8, 2017. Do we have a motion?
Same.
Seconded.
Motion moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's go right into our next item for the presentation. We have the Wakefield-Rettin inter-ministerial agreement for the school nutrition director. Michael, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Michael, could you please introduce yourself to the board?
I'm Michael Perfiling. I'm the school business administrator for the Wakefield Public Schools.
Thank you.
So tonight, I'm here to ask for your approval to renew our inter-ministerial agreement with the Rettin Public Schools for a shared school nutrition director, as it's called. School nutrition director, correct. And she has -- this will be the third renewal. The first one was a one-year. The second one was a three-year, and we're asking again for a three-year renewal. On May 12th, the school committee approved this, but it actually requires Board of Selectmen approval from both towns.
Anything else, sir?
It's in your packet. I don't know if anybody wants me to go into details. Try to keep it brief for your benefit.
I'll open it up to members of the board if they have any questions, concerns.
Actually, we just had a couple of questions. Good evening. The -- I saw the amounts were 66,300, then they went up to 67,900, 69,700. I was trying to figure out whether that represented one-half of the total compensation for that position, or how those numbers were arrived at.
Those are numbers are approximately 2 percent, rounded to even numbers, and that's what we agreed upon. They're in the same structure as we are, between 2 and 2.5 percent increases in salary. Plus, they cover all the benefits for them. I don't believe Rettin is in the GIC, so I believe that their insurance costs are higher percentage-wise than ours annually. So, it was just a 2 percent increase, but we rounded the numbers.
And then, the amount of the 66,300 for fiscal year '18, then that annualizes to 132,600 in total comp then for this position? Are we paying one-half of that, or ...?
No, no, because I don't believe Kristen's salary. Kristen Morello is the current food service director for the Wakefield Public Schools and the Rettin Public Schools. I do not believe her compensation is 120, 132, be the round numbers. I'm pretty sure it's something like that.
Well, because I'm just trying to think of all-in in terms of, if we're talking salary, then obviously benefits as well, so I'm sure the total comp was the 132. And if not, what -- how much of -- I guess my question is, how much of her total comp is Wakefield-absorbing versus Rettin?
Right. I don't have her exact salary. I don't have -- I'm not sure that I'd be privileged of that. Sure, I could get it if I asked for it, but I believe there's probably about $16,000 in benefit cost on top of that, so if she was in the 115 to 120 range, I'm guessing that would probably be pretty accurate. I believe she was pretty close to $100,000 when we started this a few years ago, four years ago. So, through increases and whatnot, I'm assuming she'd probably be somewhere around 115 maybe. I think would be an accurate number, but I don't know for sure. I don't want to speculate.
So presumably, the 132.6 is probably her all-in comp that we're paying one-half.
I would assume so, yes. Sorry, it can't be more than that.
Okay. Then I noticed, too, there was also a reference in the contract to a per diem as well. If she worked, I think, out more than 10 days beyond the end of the school year, or earlier than 10 days before the start of the school year, since we've had this contract before, has that ever been the case? And if so, what has been our outlay for that?
Yes, so she's a 215-day employee. She does not get vacation time, or she has sick time, maybe a couple of personal days, but no vacation time built into that. In the four years preceding this new renewal, we have not paid her per diem rate. So she does take the majority of summers off. She'll come in like one day a week, just to check the mail, record accounting. We get reimbursements from the federal school lunch program, so she'll record those and make sure that everything ties out to what she had submitted. But, yeah, she does not typically work in the summertime. Yeah. Base of the month of July and half of August.
Any further questions from the board? Any questions? Entertaining motion then to -- for this board to go into agreement on the inter-ministerial agreement as presented before us today.
So moved. I will re-accept the Wakefield-Rettin inter-ministerial agreement. School nutrition director.
Give me a second. Any further discussion? Here and now. All tables ahead.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Wakefield Farmers Market.
Hi, I'm Wendy Dennis, the market manager of the Wakefield Farmers Market.
I'm Heather Tribe, the assistant manager of the Wakefield Farmers Market.
Welcome to our board. You had the floor for the renewal of the market agreement between yourself and the town.
Yes.
Do you have a presentation that you'd like to make? I was just wondering if you have some of the information if you're familiar with it.
I think one thing I would like to say is that, I know Heather just introduced herself, but to reintroduce her, it's been a really wonderful thing having an assistant manager, and she's doing a great job. And what that means is that if something happens to me, as an emergency, I can't be there, we have another totally trained professional there on a Saturday if I can't make it. And it's just all-around a big help, so.
Very good. Members of the board, you have the opportunity of looking this over prior to the meeting. It was all in my packet. If anyone has any questions, please let me know, and we'll address them another time.
Any -- just, yes. There aren't any changes really from last year, right? It's basically the same.
No. The only difference is that last year was Heather's first year as assistant manager. That was...
My candidate, you made it the same.
Thank you.
The storage unit, how did it hold up?
Great. It's wonderful. Thank you so much for letting me have it, really. Oh, it made a huge difference. It was in order to make the market more welcoming to people, having we have extra tents that we put up, one for the kids. I have a couple of little artists that would come every week to draw pictures, and another one for other, you know, for adults to hang out if it rained or it was really hot. And it helps a lot, but it's just more stuff to carry. Even without those, it was a lot, so I want to just say thank you for allowing me to have that storage unit there. It's great. And I get a lot of compliments for how it looks, too, so as far as the...
Any complaints?
No, I have not heard one, so. I may get one, but now, but...
Wendy, it seems to be a big success. I've visited it every year, and these just seem growing, growing, even beyond what you thought, or how is it growing? If you could just share a little bit?
Well, I think it's fulfilling the mission when it was first thought up of, or it was by the Wakefield Initiative. And I always like to give a shout-out to Bill Chatwin, Anthony Guardia, and Kevin Fiscaldo, who spearheaded the whole Wakefield Initiative, which the group is no longer active, but they got the farmers' market going and the boating by the lake and the first holiday stroll that the event planning committee has so wonderfully taken over. But it's doing what it does. Every year, more and more people attend, and there's quite a few people from out of town. So what I would like to do, as I mentioned, is to somehow get a place for the merchants to give out coupons that people can go downtown and redeem and things like that. That would be a lovely next step to get something like that really going.
At any point, Wendy, did you take a discussion of a different location in Wakefield?
That's gone back and forth, and at this point, I actually -- it was brought up as a possibility two years ago, I believe it was. And I was like, well, you know, because originally, I mean, the data is that it is really good for downtown to have it downtown. But, that being said, I hate that figure of speech, but it fits here. I have, at that time, conferred with quite a number of other markets. I'm on a listserv of farmers' market managers from all across the United States and Canada, and it's an amazing resource. And one of the things is, is that when you move a market, you risk it dying.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's still more than half the people in Wakefield, I'm sure, that don't even know the Wakefield Farmers Market exists.
Sure, right.
And if we moved it -- Middlesex, I think it was Middle -- is it not Middle -- Middleton, I believe, did move theirs, and it died.
Oh, okay. That's good to know.
Yeah, it's -- at this point, it would be a big problem to change it, I think. I did go so far as to have my husband, who's an electrician, come and talk to the town electrician for the upper common location two years ago. And it would be feasible, but I think it would cause a lot of problems with neighbors that do things on Saturdays like the Baptist Church and...
Sure.
At this point, moving it, I think, would jeopardize its stability greatly.
First off, I think the farmers' market is a great asset in town. I love the fact that it draws a lot of folks from out of town into town, and to see how best capitalizes on that and as a board, we need to work with stakeholders to make that happen. One of the issues that I've been hearing a lot about recently is one involving one of our downtown businesses and...
Yes. The thing is, is that at this point, the first thing is that if I saturate the farmers' market with a certain type of vendor, that will hurt everybody. That's the biggest issue with that.
I think one of the concerns that I have, and I think others have shared with me as well, is the fact that we, as a board, represent Wakefield. And first and foremost, we have to put Wakefield ahead of everything else. And we are trying to revitalize that downtown. And it troubles me when I hear a local business downtown that does not have access to a farmers' market in our town, because it's such an important opportunity to be able to promote local business. And to the extent that Wakefield businesses are given some degree of preferential treatment or different standing or otherwise allowed, I mean, it's a big space, and I know that there are a lot of businesses and some, a lot of farms, for example, a lot of farms selling similar, you know, fruits and vegetables, you know. I understand the concern about saturation, but I don't think that a balancing test justifies keeping a local business out of the farmers' market for the sake of preserving other businesses that might be a part of it. And I have real trouble with that. And if we're going to approve, you know, the farmers' market going forward this year, I can't see myself doing that, knowing that we have a local business that's been excluded from it. I don't think that that's right.
Well, if you look at the mission, the Wakefield Initiative's mission in bringing the farmers' market, it was more to make Wakefield a destination. There's nowhere in that mission or the mission of Wakefield Climate Action Project to have the farmers' market be a venue for local businesses to sell at or to even to be specifically supporting specific local businesses. I totally understand what you're saying. Right now, we're talking about a product -- would you want five bakeries on Main Street? And if I kick out a vendor, because I would have to if I were going to accommodate another baker, because we don't have the clientele to support another baker. If I kick out a baker, what are my other vendors going to think? They're not going to trust me. And so it's a big problem.
I think your other vendors need to recognize that, as the Board of Selectmen that run the town, we want to make sure that our town businesses are able to have a fostering environment. And I don't see how it makes any sense for us as a town to vote to support an initiative that is deliberately keeping out one of our own town businesses. I think that that's not right. And I think that if ultimately, I mean, if ultimately one of the other bakeries feels like it can't compete because of a town bakery being a part of it, then so be it. I mean, that's how business may operate. But I think to artificially dictate who can be there and who cannot be without giving due deference to our own town businesses at such a critical time for our business community, I think, is a real problem, and I can't support that.
Well, if I let one in based on just that criteria, I mean, it will ruin -- I mean, then how am I going to say no to anybody else? That's where you get a problem.
I looked at -- I spent time looking through the agreement and highlighted it, you know, so I understand what it says. I mean, and the whole premise of the agreement is that the rules are meant to be adjusted as this board deems appropriate, because it's town space. And so if there are other town businesses that are interested in taking part in the farmers' market, I do think that there should be considerable deference given to their participation. It's not for nothing to participate in the farmers' market. There's costs involved for the businesses, and there's a commitment involved. And if another business in Wakefield, be it downtown or anywhere else in Wakefield, wants to do that, and it would be appropriate to be a part of the farmers' market, I think they should have that opportunity. I don't think that they should be precluded from doing that. And I think it's wholly unfair to prevent a business in our town from participating in an appropriate venue in our town.
Again, I did run this by the many farmers' market managers across the United States and Canada, and I presented them with this issue. And I also, I do want to clarify, I did see that it may have looked like I had responded to them in a not-nice way, and that is not true. I just want to clarify that. I saw the term "shockingly" something or other. What was it? Shockingly turned down, or whatever it was. The word "shockingly," I just want to clarify, I sent her a very cordial email explaining all the aspects of what a farmers' market is, how they are run, and, you know, the rules and regulations of our market. I don't -- did you read my article on the item on Friday?
I didn't.
Okay, because that would help you understand a little bit more where I'm coming from. I'm not saying, I'm just saying that's...
I understand where you're coming from, but I don't agree with it as a representative of the town. And I didn't read your response to the -- frankly, whether it was cordial or not, it's of no consequence from my perspective. All I hear is I distill it down to, we have a local business that we're trying to see grow, like any local business. They have an opportunity here to expand their reach and broaden, you know, their customer base. And also, they're a great anchor, you know, because they're a downtown business, so it gives people another -- we're talking about how do we drop people from the lake down to the downtown? That's a good connector, and I think it's a real missed opportunity for the town. And it's not a capacity issue, certainly, because we have the physical space, certainly.
No, it's a customer base issue, though, capacity-wise. That's what the issue is. It's like, do you want five bakeries on Main Street? That's part of it, too.
I want Wakefield businesses promoted. Yes. I don't care if we have 10 bakeries. And ultimately, you know, the economy's going to dictate that, you know. If five bakeries can't be supported, then so be it. But I'm not -- the Selectmen aren't going to limit the number of bakeries, because we don't think that five could survive there. If we can get five bakeries, then so be it. I don't imagine they probably would all survive, but that's not us to be picking and choosing winners or losers. But I do think it's important that, as a town, if we have a town business, that town business should have the opportunity to be represented at the Wakefield Farmers Market. Would you -- can I ask, would you reconsider that if the board's input?
Not at this point. They reached out way after the time where I've actually invited. I've got the whole thing set up for this season. But what I would like to say is that if we could get some group to host a table, I don't have the volunteer capacity or the tents anymore, because we did lose a tent or two last in a windstorm last year. But if I would love to have, and I've invited, Paul, I even spoke with the merchant group one time, and at the time, no one was able to do this. But my idea is that if the merchant, Wakefield Merchant Group, or the Chamber, or some group would buy a tent, a table, two chairs, and one business each week, which means if there were 18 businesses involved, it would be one Saturday a year, host that table. They get to highlight their business, and every other business in Wakefield that wants to provide information and coupons at that table, do so. And that would be that one space. I would not charge for that space. Initially, there was a charge for businesses to take turns highlighting their business at the market, and we stopped doing that. But this would be a freer charge, and this would be an opportunity for many businesses to have their coupons, restaurants come in, you know. That would get people to go downtown, because they would have to redeem them down at the stores. So I would love to -- that would, I would love to see that happen. I unfortunately don't have the manpower to coordinate such an effort, because I have a full-time job, too. This is, I don't just do the farmers' market.
And I appreciate your efforts.
So I just want to say, I would just love if somebody would spearhead that. I would be very happy, because I do support Wakefield.
Of the bakeries, though, how many of those bakeries are Wakefield bakeries?
None of them are, but there wasn't any Wakefield bakeries when the market started.
But we have one now, and it expresses an interest and desire.
Well, I feel it would severely jeopardize the market to add another baked product. We still, it happened in the, an extra one got added at the Melrose Winter Market, and I don't think it was a good thing. It had cut sales for other people. It just, it's just, it's a balancing act. I'm running a business that, it's a nonprofit, so any money that's made doesn't benefit any individual. But my business is to support my vendors, because if I don't support my vendors, my current vendors, the ones, two of the bakeries, three of the bakeries, four of them, three of them, they committed, paid upfront for the whole season, the very first year. They took a big chance to help, and they helped make our market successful. I, if I am not loyal to my vendors, they will not be loyal to me. And they may say, oh, it's raining, I'm not going to show up on a Saturday. You know, it's just, it can get, it's important. They're running, you know, they have business, it's just, that's how farmers' markets work.
But respectfully, I mean, that's politically. I mean, back when you started this, this business wasn't even in existence at that time. And I'm not saying the business, because I'm not trying to promote any particular business, but it's a Wakefield, it's a Wakefield business that has the opportunity to be present here at a farmers' market in Wakefield.
I need to see that the market has a growing, a more customer base before I add another baker. It just, it would not be a good thing.
I have to interrupt for a second. We did have a public hearing scheduled for 10 past, we're already 10 minutes past that deadline right now. I would like to move one way or the other on this. If we can have others see if they have a moment, if they have more comment to make. Shall we at least open the public hearing, just set aside until time be in? What's going on?
You can certainly do that, Mr. Chairman, or you can just let him finish off. I mean, I think that Attorney McGrail, you're not going to mind if we take a few more minutes? Yeah? Chief, are you okay?
Okay, so...
Take a few more minutes? Yeah.
I'd just like to hear if there's anybody else that has comments that they would like to make at this time, and then we'll right back to Ed if continuing.
So Wendy, just, so I like the idea, and you proposed it, about the merchants or the Chamber of Commerce having a table. Have you had conversations this year about this summer and how that would work? Because I actually think that would be a really successful model, right? It would promote Wakefield businesses, one table, they can do a schedule. I know the one bakery that we're talking about is already committed to Melrose during the summer, so they actually committed somewhere else. But we do have a lot of growing new businesses. It would be amazing to have different foods. So how have those conversations gone?
I have not had a chance to talk to the merchants, because I had talked to them before, and I hadn't heard back before, and I haven't reached out to them this year. I hadn't seen, are you meeting at Harrington's? Well, you're not, are you doing anymore? You're not there. I don't even know who, I just found out that they recently rejuvenated, like, the last meeting where this all came up was the first time they...
Lauren Marie's small.
I'm sorry?
Lauren Marie's small.
Yeah. And I think that's, I wasn't, they just recently had their first finally pulled-back-together meeting, so there was nobody to talk to. But I'd be happy to go to the next meeting. And I have talked to Mary Ann, there is an issue with, well, there's Linfield businesses, because of Wakefield-Linfield Chamber, so it would, to me, it would make more sense to have, have it be a local Wakefield merchant group to do that. And I would love to see it. I'd be happy to go talk or whatever, now that I know who the point person is. So, Lauren Marie?
No, it's that right now, she isn't.
Okay, well, I'd be happy to reach out to her, because I would love to see this happen. Because as a townie, I definitely support, you know, Wakefield businesses.
I spoke to the business recently, a Saturday, and they expressed interest in wanting to do it in Wakefield, but were prohibited from doing it. And I think that that's not right as a business, you know, to have that happen. And I think there needs to be some sort of preference given to Wakefield businesses in this process, notwithstanding what had happened previously. The old processes I respect, and you've done great work, and I recognize that. I know you've put a lot of effort into this, and it's grown every year. And I'm not minimizing any of that. But we have a real opportunity here to really grow our own businesses within our own community. And I think it's a real waste and inappropriate to not allow them to do that on our own public
Any further discussion from the members of the board? Based upon the comments that were made, what are the wishes of this board at this time?
Some would say a motion.
That's correct. So anyone interested, who would be willing to make a motion on the approval of the Wakefield Farmers Market as it was presented to us this evening?
Also, any motion to approve the...
Do I have a second for discussion?
Second.
Second for discussion. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the farmers' market at this point? I'm going to make a comment on this first. The same issue has been up a couple of times in the past years, as far as allowing Wakefield residents to go in, or businesses to go into the farmers' market. I do respect the fact that you have to do your work months in advance to set up the upcoming year as well, too. Something like this disrupt that potentially, possibly. But I do, in a way, agree with Ed as far as bringing in local merchants to the farmers' market. Is this the right time? I'm not sure. It's up to this board to make that determination. So with that saying...
Can I say one thing?
Hold on. I think Ed was going to have to say something.
No, I just wanted to say, the points are valid on both sides, but is there anyone else that wants to, that we're aware of, Ed or Wendy, that wants to get in from Wakefield as a business to the farmers' market that's been stopped or rejected or whatever? Just one?
Pormian's Coffee originally, they, Mike moved out, they're looking again to live in Wakefield, but originally, we're living in Wakefield when they started. And Trow's Treasures, Sarah Trow is a Wakefield resident. And again, they were coming in with products that we didn't have, you know, already close to saturation on. So that was why that happened. We also have a couple of Linfield businesses, Sheepsheds in Linfield and...
Okay, but there's only one in Wakefield that we know of.
We're really talking about one business that's affected by this current decision.
Right. Okay. I didn't know if there was anyone else besides that. Okay. That's it for me, yeah.
Okay. So there was a motion made of a second. Any further?
I'm looking to move to amend the motion. So I'm looking to have the motion to allow, so long as the Wakefield business that's applied is allowed to participate in the farmers' market.
We have a second on the amendment.
Second.
Now, discussion on the amendment. And the discussion from the board on the amendment before us, to allow the one additional Wakefield business to participate in the farmers' market this year.
I'm a little uncomfortable with the wording of the amendment, only because of the precedent it might set for other businesses being Wakefield, walking in and bumping and established. I absolutely see what you're saying, Ed, and I think we all know the business we're talking about. We should actually name it if we're going to try to force Wendy to have it. But I am uncomfortable with upending the card at this point in the season if they were to apply, I don't know if they would get in, but if they followed the process. But to jump in late, as you said, is, that makes me uncomfortable that we're making that happen. I completely understand what you're saying, but I'm just worried, then would other businesses feel as if they could bump out established businesses that had been farmers' markets?
I think it's a little bit different here, only, well, one, because the rules and regulations here, in the agreement that we're being asked to approve, allow us the authority to do just that, to make adjustments from time to time. And I understand, and you're concerned about the precedent, but I think this is a somewhat unique circumstance, in that it's now been clear to the farmers' market, at least my perspective, and I don't know to what extent the board shares it, that I think we need to put Wakefield businesses as a priority going forward. So in the selection process, if they could be mindful of that, because it's on our town land, and I think we should be supporting our town businesses. And so I think that's, we owe that to our constituents. As far as this particular instance, I agree with you that, in general, I don't like the idea of the ad hoc nature of it. I think it's necessitated by the circumstances that have been presented to us. I think we've all, we cannot walk away from here with a better understanding of what needs to happen going forward, so we don't have the same issue next year. But I do think for this year, we are potentially compromising a business opportunity for one of our own that I want to see be able to... for one of our own that I want to see be able to, to get a fair shake.
I absolutely agree with you want to build up Wakefield businesses, but that wasn't necessarily the impetus of the market, which was to draw people to Wakefield. I don't know how good a job we do to then keep them in Wakefield, but the impetus wasn't to build up Wakefield businesses. But certainly, I want to build up Wakefield businesses, but I, but I am concerned about amending this contract just for that specific reason.
We're hosting on a town land, though, and the fact that this, this is going to be on town land, and we're precluded, we're excluding a town business, just doesn't feel right to me. If it were other town businesses that were there, and that was, maybe the considerations would be different. But, I mean, we're talking about businesses from other towns coming in, into Wakefield, setting up shop in our town, at, at the sacrifice to our own businesses, and that doesn't feel right to me. I think that's wrong.
We're not bumping anybody out.
No.
Just including, you know, another vendor in there.
It could jeopardize other, all the other vendors. The more you dissipate, the more vendors, that's why I don't keep adding, occasionally I'll add someone that's a wholly, totally different kind of product. But I did lose some vendors, and then I add some in, but I'm keeping a balance. I'm, it's a business. The running a Farmer's Market is running a business. And I, over the years, through my experience and talking to other market managers, have expertise on how to maintain a successful Farmer's Market.
But frankly, I may not want to maintain the four bakeries if one of the four bakeries is not a Wakefield bakery. So if we have to add a fifth, and then one of us to drop out because of it, I'd rather see four bakeries, three of which are out of town, one of which is in town. Because I think ultimately, if that's what has to happen, then, then so be it. It's, it's a successful market. We don't have space constraints. We have opportunity here. To Tony's point, we're adding on. We're not, we're not taking anyone out. We're not replacing someone. We're adding on. And if you find that it doesn't work, then perhaps someone may not come back next year because of it. But I don't think that we should sacrifice our own opportunities here for our own town people.
At this time, we want to call for a vote. We've had enough discussion on this. We're one way or the other, people should be setting their minds. So on the motion to amend, to allow the bread shop to open, to participate in the Farmer's Market, all in favor? Raise your hand, please. All opposed? Comes down to a three-three tie. That's denied. Back to an original motion. To go back to the original on this right now, is to put the original agreement back in play as presented to us and the same as last year. So there's already motion and a second, and all in his final vote. All in favor? All opposed?
Can I ask a question? Can we postpone the vote? Or does it have to be taken today? Just because we have seven members generally.
Yes.
I know, but we have just seven members generally, that's why I don't think the three-three-
We want, we-
Steve, can I get just a jump in?
You can certainly table this motion.
Does it, does it take a-
The Farmer's Market does not start until June 17th.
Okay, does it into-
However, our next meeting would be June 12th, Carrie?
Yes, correct.
So it would be cutting it close.
Does it cause any, 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 what's that?
It changes, it changes the PR, you know, public relations, you know, advertising this and that, and saying what's going on at the market.
You might not have a full board on this meeting as well.
True, okay. No, just a thought, I just wanted to see if there's any other-
And I'm just going to respond on a personal level. Are we going to do that every time we don't have a full board? We're not going to make any command decisions?
I'm just asking.
I'm asking, but I'm going to turn it the other way around. I mean, we're, we're here to serve the public. I don't think we're serving the public by post, continuous or another.
Well, a three-three tie, I don't think we're serving public either.
Well, maybe so, but what happens is the next time there's a three-three tie. Oh, the next time there's a three-two tie. We are a board sometimes, where we dominate six members. We're not, we will never get anything before, in my opinion.
I guarantee you that.
That's right.
Just, just question, I just, just wanted to see if I can get a-
I mean, that's only based on experience. So what is, what is the wish of your wish now? Because you saw the floor.
No, take a vote.
You sure? All favor of the granting approval to the Farmer's Market for this year's season? Say aye? Opposed? One abstention? One abstention, five in favor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I promise I will work real hard to help all the businesses in Wakefield.
I would ask that you reconsider this for this year, because I think it's really important for this business in particular. And I understand going forward, we can be more comprehensive in our approach. But I really think that, for the good of our town, it's important that you reconsider. You have, you've developed something very successful, and I have great respect for what you've done. I don't think that it's going to all fall down, because you have one Wakefield business added on, and I would ask you to consider that strongly. Thank you.
And I will work very hard to get the merchant group going. So many businesses can help, be helped. Thank you very much.
Okay, we are behind on the public hearing that was set for-
Seven-ten.
Seven-ten.
Just, we would like to have a public hearing to discuss the suspension and revocation of the license.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to move, open the public hearing, move it by-
Roll call.
Roll call vote to open the meeting for a public hearing, for the possible suspension or revocation of the license for Karen's restaurant located at 395, 397 Main Street. Ed?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. At this moment, I have to recuse myself from this. And my vice chairman, Ed, to my right, will continue, Mr. May, with the assistance of Mr. Mayo.
Do you have to put the statement of your recuse on the record, why you're recusing yourself?
I was told that I did not have to do that.
Okay.
Okay, since Mr. Mullen is not here tonight, now I'm going to get his paycheck for this meeting. We already discussed him. So I'll give you a few of the ground rules on this. We have, unfortunately, had hearings like this before. This is not a trial. We have a lot of lawyers in the room. It's not a trial. We're not, you're not allowed, there won't be any cross-examining or questioning of witnesses. There will no questioning of the other side from the, from anybody speaking, from the audience, however, or the presenters. The board can certainly ask questions, okay? And what I'd like to do is there are, start off with Chief Smith to talk about the investigations that we've done. So Chief, if you would come up while we start that process. The real evidence that the board needs to make a threshold decision on, that there are really two incidents in front of us. The questions are, is that from a, from a preponderance of the evidence? Did Karen's sell to an intoxicated person on each occasion? And on one occasions, were people allowed to leave with open beer containers? And if you reach that level, then we can talk about sanctions. Okay, but that's the threshold question. So Chief, if you would start and describe the incidents.
First, Mr. Mayo, are we going to separate these two events, or are we going to keep them as one?
We are going to set, well, they are, we are looking at two events, but I think I'd like to have you talk about both events first, and then they can talk about both events. So we just go back and forth, but there are two events.
Okay, so we have a, let's go back, I'll start chronologically. We'll go back to 4:28 relative to Karen's bar. Wakefield, I'm sorry, 4:30. The Wakefield police, we were called to, down to Karen's on the last half shift. Let me get my bearings here. 1:26 in the morning for a report of a fight between two females in the street in front of the restaurant. Officers went down there, and when they get down there, what they found were two females heavily intoxicated, based on their training and experience, who were talking loudly and laughing. Conversation with the two females and a male acquaintance indicated to the officers that it was actually not a fight. They were very loud, and as they left the bar that night. And when they get out onto the street, they were so intoxicated that they fell onto a front, onto the, onto the hood of a Jeep that was parked in front. Our officers talked to them, and they were told that they were just kidding around again. But they noticed that they were unstable on their feet, the classic glassy eyes, they were bloodshot. Their speech was incoherent. While they were out there, they had conversation with a Kevin, pardon my French here, Guillaume, I'm going to guess, who was identified as a restaurant worker. He stated that the two women and plus this other gentleman by the name, well, this other gentleman had been in the bar, the two females had been drinking, and the other fellow only had, apparently had one drink. Mr. Guillaume went on to say that he is an employee, he did see them in the bar throughout the night, and they had been served in there. In addition to that-
I'm sorry, Chief, they had not been served?
They had been served. All three of them had been served in the bar that night. As a result of that, rather than take the two females into protective custody, the officers on the scene decided that the male was sober enough, after performing field sobriety tests, that he was allowed to drive the two females home from that point in time. The issue here being, again, our officers are being called down there in the middle of night for violation where we have no doubt that the two people were heavily intoxicated. They had been in the bar all night, they had been served repeatedly in the bar that night. And, and it's one thing that bothers me beyond what you see in this report, is the fact that our officers are putting themselves in a really tough situation. Our officers have been assaulted historically, dealing with patrons who we believe have come out of this location. We've had instances in the booking room where officers have been pushed and shoved. And I have a responsibility to report this to you, but I also have a responsibility to my officers to make sure that the officers that work for the Wakefield Police Department don't get hurt. And, and if I don't bring that forward, then I'm not doing my job. And I don't think it's due diligence if I don't do that. The second event we have, we have was on the 30th of May, going into the, if I can find a report here.
I think that was 4:28.
I'm sorry, on the 28th of-
April.
28th of April, in which we were called to the area, we, our attention was brought to the area just up the street from Karen's. Karen's is 397 Main Street. We were called to the area of 385 Main Street for two males who were sitting in the doorway, appeared to be very drunk, and had in their possession two Heineken beers. Each one had a Heineken beer in their possession. The officer who was made aware of this while he was on patrol at the corner of Main and Chestnut, made his way down to the, to the location, located these two, these two males. The males were yelling, words at passersby's. They were clearly, again, based on the officer's training and experience under the influence of alcohol. In fact, the words were actually incoherent. One pass person that one of our officers passed, as they were going to that location, stopped the officer and said, "Good luck with those two." The officer made, made observation of the two men, and as they were having a conversation with them, the two guys continued to drink, drink out of the Heineken beer bottles. Well, needless to say, that came to a stop fairly quickly, and both appeared, again, to be intoxicated. They were unsteady on their feet, they were swaying, they were stepping backwards, slurred speech. They couldn't complete their sentences, and both told the officers that they had come from Karen's restaurant, and they resided on Chestnut Street, and they were on their way home. Based on that, the officer took them into custody for violation of the open container bylaw. One piece that I do want to point out is both, both of those people that they ran into did tell our officers that those beers, those bottles that they were drinking of actually came from Karen's, Karen's restaurant. So there's no question, according to those guys, that those bottles not only left the restaurant, it's not the first time we've had this happen. They were sitting in the doorway drinking beers from a licensed establishment, and they were clearly intoxicated, in the opinion of our officers.
Those are the two events, Mr. Mayo. If there are any questions, clarifications that you can-
Just a, just a quick comment first, some spot here, but obviously, it's a very, very serious situation we've run into, and it's happened on multiple occasions, apparently. And our officers are, are doing a great job in town, but they're definitely putting themselves at risk every time they go out. And these situations, it's a horrible example for other businesses in town as well. I just wanted to make a quick point there, but any comments or any questions for the Chief at this time?
Chief, I have a question. Is, have you had more activity at this business than others that serve alcohol in the downtown area? And is that inconsistent?
I'm referring just to two events out there. I certainly feel free to fill you in on some others if you wish.
But there are others that you could, okay.
We've been down there more than twice.
Okay, thank you.
Ian, I've observed people drinking outside.
I'm sorry?
I've observed people drinking outside.
Chief, I would be interested in having a little more context, some of the other incidents, sorts of things you've seen, aside from these two reports.
I'm sorry, is it, could you-
Some of the other incidents that you say aren't in these reports, could you just give us a sense of other sorts of issues that you're saying you've encountered?
Yes, Ed, we've been down there for noise complaints because the band has been, band has been too loud. We're also at an incident back in March where a town official, and I have a letter here from Mr. Mayo, to the owner of the restaurant, where a party was standing out in front of the place drinking Bud Light on the public sidewalk. We've been down there for medical aids, which is, we don't get a lot of medical aids in restaurants and bars. We've been down there for that one, and we've also been down there for another situation where it was a mental health issue, but the party that was there, party that was involved had been served. And whatever happened, we ended up going in there for a mental health issue. We've also, it was also another event that came before this board last, 2016, last fall.
And the medical aid, was that intoxication related?
I'm sorry?
The medical aid, was that intoxication related?
That was a tough, tough one to call. I mean, I'm not a doctor. But we did have the second, the other issue that ended up being a mental health issue, there was an issue of that party being served while that party was in the, in the bar. And then he started behaving inconsistent with proper behavior. We were called, and we had to send him down to the Melrose Hospital.
And just to clarify, you know, just from the preponderance of evidence perspective, do we know how much alcohol was consumed at Karen's? Or do we just know that Karen's was the last location that they, they would have been served?
Now, which incident are you referring to?
I guess either.
Well, on the two that I presented to you tonight.
Right, like the 20th, the 30th.
We don't know, all, all we know is they said that they had been drinking in Karen's that night. The, we don't know where they were at nine in the morning, six at night. We know, we do know that by their own admission, as intoxicated as they were, they admitted to us that, in fact, they blurted it out, that they had been drinking in Karen's that night. So it's, I think, in this business, it's safe to assume that they probably, nonetheless, that's where they had their last drink, and it's safe to assume that where they said they had been drinking at Karen's, they hadn't been any other place prior to. I would have to tell you, on the second incident where we arrested the two parties under the town bylaw, and again, it goes to the safety of the Wakefield police officers, there was a wrestling match in the booking room. And, and, you know, that created, that's, that's a serious issue for me. You know, when we're dealing with intoxicated people, whether it's a drunk driving, or an accident, or a situation like this, things tend to get ugly rather quickly, and unfortunately. And that's just the nature of the business. But when it gets to the point where our officers have to get involved in the booking room, or we have to force someone into a cruiser, or whatnot, it puts us in a huge liability and huge expense. And, and my goal not only is to protect the citizens, make sure the licensee is operating within the restrictions of their license, but also to make sure the Wakefield police officers are safe.
So I guess the issue is less one of how much they were served, but the fact they were served, because by the time you started, and they were obviously intoxicated beyond a point they should have been served at, is, is that my understanding?
I, I think a good way to look at it is, if they had gone in to Karen's and had one drink, and they were that intoxicated, then they never should have been served, because they were intoxicated. When, do you see my point?
Right.
If they're going in for one drink, and they're as intoxicated as they were when our officers ran into them, it's safe to make, it's a safe assumption on our behalf that they were served while being intoxicated, which is a violation of, of their license.
Any other questions from the board? Chief Smith?
Just one, after the first offense that we're dealing with tonight, in time, did you speak, did the- the officer speak to anyone at Karen's and explain what had happened? Like, hey...
These were in consecutive nights.
Oh, they were consecutive nights, actually. I'm sorry.
It was 4/28, I think. Well, a night away.
Sorry.
4/28 and 4/38.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
No other questions?
No.
Can we bring up...
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. McGrath?
Thanks.
Come on up.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for the delay.
Again, Mr. McGrath, you know the rules, no?
I know the rules. Can you just introduce yourself? Sure. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrath with offices at 599 North Avenue in Wakefield, here representing Karen's Restaurants, Inc. With me tonight is Leanne Wheeler, who is the principal of the entity and also the manager of the all-alcohol license on the premises. So, she is the person in charge to discuss with the board. If I may, I guess for you, Mr. Mayo, when Mr. Mullen isn't here, you had mentioned that the hearing involves an open container or leaving premises with an open container and then serving intoxicated person. On the notice that we got, in our notice, it's only dealing with the service of an intoxicated person. There was no reference on a violation for leaving the premises with an open container.
Okay.
And I had a conversation with Attorney Mullen about that earlier today. So, from our perspective, that's what we're here to talk about because that's what the public notice was and what the alleged violations involved were the serving of intoxicated person. I'd like to start by saying that no matter what happens tonight, you know, these hearings are very uncomfortable, I think, obviously, for my client. You know, I know the board wants to see successful businesses in towns operating how, you know, to serve everybody. So, I don't think it's a pleasant experience for any of us to be here dealing with this. My client is 100%, no matter what happens tonight, committed to working with your board as a licensee and to continue to work with the police department in the service that they provide her and her patrons. So, I'd just like to say that before we go on. With that being said, the purpose of tonight's hearing is two-pronged. The first is for your board to determine if the licensee, Karen's Restaurants, Inc., sold an alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person on the nights of the allegations. It's not an easy standard to determine, to make a finding on. As Mr. Nabrowski said, you know, when were they served? Where else were they? You know, it actually has to be service of an intoxicated person while they're in the restaurant. And you have to find that the facts support that and make that determination. Not an easy determination to make. Second, if it is, the second prong is, if it is determined by your board that Karen's did sell an alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person, then obviously, your board has options of sanctions as dictated by Chapter 205 of the Code of the Town of Wakefield. With all due respects, the other events that were just discussed, they're not appropriate. They shouldn't be discussed tonight because this hearing is regarding two specific matters, not other things that might have happened, other calls that have happened. You know, my client explained to me that the call, the 911 call was a call where someone had an incident at the bar that was non-alcohol related, that they needed help. So, you know, those really shouldn't be considered. The focus should be was, on the evenings in question, is it provable that intoxicated person was served at the restaurant at a specific time, those specific nights? With all due respect, from the testimony and the evidence presented in the form of the police reports, I do not see how the board can get past the first prong on either of the allegations. The chief referenced that there were two events, and one was on April 28th. That was the first event. The allegations in this event, as stated in the police report, are full of hearsay allegations, which is compounded by the fact that not only are we dealing with hearsay allegations, we're dealing with hearsay testimony from unidentified witnesses. We don't even know who the witnesses are. What's also made this very difficult for my client and I to prepare, the reports are redacted. So, for whatever reason, you know, it's probably private privacy rights or whatever, but we don't even know who any of these people are. We haven't had an opportunity to talk to them, to interview them. There was an incident back in October that we were here, that it was found that there was no responsibility whatsoever. I think the board at that time was mystified why we even were here because there was nothing to even cooperate, an alleged event that occurred. And when we received those reports, there was no redaction of the names. We were able to deal with it, look up criminal records, go to the court, do some research in that regard. So, we were a little bit handicapped in our preparation to be here tonight. What I would, as I've mentioned, there is no credible testimony as far as witnesses that were there, and I'll get into that a little bit. But to start, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like my client, I'd like to ask my clients, my clients some questions if I could regarding this April 28th evening. Thank you. For the record, Leanne, could you please identify yourself by name and address?
Leanne Wheeler, 109 Hopkins Street.
And what is your position at Karen's?
Owner and manager.
Have you had the opportunity to read the police report relating to the matter on April 28, 2017?
Yes.
Could you say it again, please?
Yes.
As manager of the all-alcohol license, do you monitor the consumption of alcohol by your patrons to make sure no one is overserved?
Constantly. Always.
The police report states that you were aware, when I read the report, at the bottom of the report, it states that you were aware that patrons left with open containers of beer and alcohol on the evening of April 28, 2017. Is that true? Were you aware of that?
Yes.
You were. Okay. Do you normally let patrons leave with open containers of beer or alcohol?
No.
Okay. Did you see the two men leave with the alcohol that evening? You were manager on duty. You did not?
I was. I was, went in the kitchen when I came out. I was told that the two guys left and snuck the beers with them. I went out and tried to find them and I couldn't.
Okay. So, you were informed by someone else? Was it another patron, another employee?
Customer.
A customer. Said two guys just snuck out with open containers. And you went outside and you looked for them?
I did.
And you weren't able to find them?
No.
And approximately, how long was it between when the two men left with the containers that you went outside and looked around where you couldn't find them and the police department showed up?
At least a half hour.
Okay. At least 30 minutes. What do you, what do you do now? Have you implemented anything to prevent that from happening in the future?
Yes. Since the day after that happened, I've had a doorman every weekend at the door, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, till the doors are locked at the end of the night.
And as I've mentioned, Mr. Mayo and members of the board, although the open containers leaving the premises is not the subject of the hearing tonight, the reason I bring it up is, I think it goes to the credibility and the character of my client. She did not avoid the issue that night when the police said, "Do you know people left with open containers?" She said, "Yes, I do." She didn't, you know, say, "Oh, I didn't know that." She didn't duck the issue. She admitted to them that it happened. So, it does go to her credibility and her character and her responsibility as far as the license is concerned. So, as I mentioned earlier, the allegations in this April 28th incident are, you know, clearly hearsay. If you look at the first paragraph, and I'm going to read it into the record specifically, by the officer, it states, "On Friday, April 28th, I was working at first half shifts, 15:30 to 23:30 hours, assigned to Unit 95. At approximately 22:40, which was 10:40 at night, I was on patrol in the area of Main Street and Chestnut Street. At this, at this time, I was approached by two unidentified male parties." So, I don't know why we don't get names or have names, but we don't have names of who those individuals are, who stated that two males were causing a disturbance in the area of Karen's Main Street. They stated that the males were inside Karen's and appeared to be very drunk. They stated that the males left Karen's after yelling inside the bar. They believed the males were drinking beer purchased at Karen's. So, they believe it. They don't know it. They don't say what time they were at Karen's. No specific thing in their statement. They're unidentified, but they don't even say they were there, you know, five minutes ago, 10 minutes ago. Could have been way earlier in the night. We know that this happened at 10:40. It wasn't really, you know, an early morning event. There's package stores that were open. They were open till 11 o'clock in the downtown area. I don't know if they got beer somewhere else. But again, it goes back to the standard of your board that has to make a finding, that these individuals were intoxicated in the restaurant when they were served alcohol, specifically. Not that they were a patron of Karen's and sometime turned up downtown drunk later at night or sometime at night, but there has to be a finding that when they were served at that time, they were intoxicated. And basically, in all deference to the chief, you know, he had made a statement that they appeared to be very drunk. When you read the report, it's actually interesting because the officer says, it references, while speaking to, and again, I can't reference who they are, says, "While speaking to [blank], both appeared intoxicated." Appeared intoxicated. Don't say they were intoxicated. Appeared at that time. So, there's some, you know, obviously, some open issues here and unidentified witnesses and nobody that puts them in Karen's at a specific time that's credible or has a name that says that they were served while they were intoxicated. I don't know, Mr. Mayo, that's my, that's my issue on the April 28th. I don't know if you want to take these separately or if...
Good question. Good question. I had to see. With the names that are marked out, is that something that...
Well, it could be an ongoing criminal investigation.
Okay. So, they have to be... Okay. So, they can't be revealed. Okay.
Peter, ma'am?
Yes.
So, I'm not bothered at all by appeared intoxicated, Brian, because you and I know that's how police write reports. No one's ever going to say, that's just how they write. It's cop speak. It should be clear. I don't think there's anything that prevents us from taking hearsay. I know it's not your preference, but I don't think. Is that correct?
Correct. This is not a trial.
It's not a trial. So, we can take hearsay if we want to. And just, you know, the characterization of the first time Ms. Wheeler was before us and she was as apologetic, and I appreciate she's trying to run a business, but we didn't overwhelmingly find nothing happened. We very, that was a tricky case and we realized the evidence wasn't there before us. But I think your characterization is a little strong as to how we, as the board, felt because we sent Ms. Wheeler away saying, you know, "Really have to, you can't let these things happen. It's not the kind of businesses we have in Wakefield." So, I'm not as concerned with you about the hearsay aspect of how it's been reported. To me, they were really close to Karen's. They were intoxicated, you know, not just appeared intoxicated, strong odor of alcohol, steady in their feet, swaying, stepping backwards and forwards, slurred speech, and that they admitted that they had been drinking at Karen's. You know, you can argue one way, but I'm not that concerned at 10:40 that they had just been wandering the streets of Wakefield with the bottle. So...
Any other questions or statements?
No, I'm fine on this. Well, I didn't know if you were going to take these as separate matters or...
Well, like I said, I think, getting up, getting up, getting up, we are looking at these after talking to the town council as two separate incidents. I'll let you go into it. Why don't you go to the second one now?
Okay. The second, the second event, unfortunately, Leanne was not working that night. She was not on duty. So, she's not able to provide direct testimony on anything that transpired that night. But I will say, you know, the comment was made that, you know, and I just have to stick to kind of the facts of the police report, that the comment was made that they were repeatedly served, served repeatedly in the bar that evening. There's no evidence of that. There's no evidence whatsoever in the police report that they were served repeatedly in the bar. So, you know, I just think the board needs to focus on, you know, again, the finding, were they intoxicated when they were served? And, you know, I've read the report multiple times over the past two weeks and there's nothing in there that states that. And it could be because there's no one that could be a witness to that. Certainly, the police weren't in the bar when people were being served, but, you know, I do have to reference that point. I think this whole incident is, I guess, colored by the fact that the original police we called to Karen's was because of a fight, an alleged fight that was occurring. So, when I read this police report, you know, when I read it, I was like, "Oh, my God, two women fighting in the middle of Main Street. This is horrible." You know, and I think that's the way people react to it. But when you read it, and the chief himself said that that wasn't what happened. There was not a fight. And there was a witness, actually, that was, again, an unidentified witness, that referenced to the police, that they saw no one punching each other or fighting. And I think once the police had an opportunity to approach the women, they recognized that a fight did not occur. And, you know, they were hossing around and fooling around, and that caused them to fall on the hood of a car, of the car, because they were hugging and playing around. And so, you know, basically, I think, you know, again, it's kind of, when you read it, you know, it kind of colors the whole situation, what transpired that evening. What we were able to do, the police report references a gentleman by the name of Kevin, and I, the chief had a hard time with his last name, and I'm going to too. I think it's Gilhelm is the way you pronounce it. And basically, he is the one that was working that night. As I mentioned, Leanne was not there. He's been an employee of the restaurant. And the officer that made the, was on scene, had referenced corresponding with Kevin. And what he says in his report, he says, "At this time, an employee from Karen's identified as Kevin," and it's redacted, but we know who it is, "exited to the restaurant to speak with the officers, stated that [blank] and [blank] were in the restaurant, and the two females had been drinking alcohol while at the establishment. I asked, asked Kevin if he witnessed the two fighting, and he stated he did not, and it appeared the two were getting along all night. I asked Kevin, who stated he was the bartender, how much [blank] and [blank] had to drink while at Karen's, and he stated he wasn't, excuse me, wasn't sure." So, what I was able to do is, Kevin could not be here tonight. I have a sworn affidavit that I'd like to submit into evidence on this, if I may, Mr. Mayo? If I can pass that around, please? Not a trial. Mr. Mayo, can I get a copy? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, chief. If I may, Mr. Mayo, I'd like to read this into the record.
Well, I guess the gist of this is, is that the board member has it. I don't think we need to have it read.
I think I do.
Can you read it?
I think I do for my record on this, if I could. Dull me to do that.
I don't think you need to go through the whole thing. Why don't you just get to the part where we're at Karen's?
Well, I just want to identify this because I think it's important that, I'm trying to create a record, obviously, that I'd like an opportunity to have this on the record specifically, read into the record. It will take me two minutes to do it.
Okay. All right, I guess.
I have no choice. Okay. This is an affidavit of Kevin Gilhelm, who deposes, it states, "Now comes Kevin Gilhelm, who deposes and says as follows. One, my name is Kevin Gilhelm, and I currently reside at 608 Winthrop Street, Metford, Massachusetts. Two, I am currently employed by Karen's Restaurant here and after Karen's as a server and bartender. Three, I am TIPS certified. Four, I graduated from the Renning Police Academy on February 11, 2016. Five, I served as a patrol officer on the city of PBD, Massachusetts, police force from my graduation from the academy until November of 2016. I am currently on a voluntary leave of absence. Six, my leave of absence from the PBD Police Department was for personal reasons and is not associated with any wrongdoing and or disciplinary matters. Seven, as a police officer, I had the opportunity to respond to calls and involve intoxicated persons. Eight, I was serving tables at Karen's on the evening of Saturday, April 29, 2017. Nine, I've had the opportunity to read the police report prepared by Officer Thomas Flynn dated May 6, 2017, related to an incident on the morning of April 30, 2017. Ten, I am familiar with this incident, and I did speak with Officer Flynn outside Karen's at that time. Eleven, Officer Flynn in his report stated that I was the bartender that evening, which is not accurate. As stated above, I was serving tables that evening and not the bartender. Twelve, I think Officer Flynn may have been confused because I told him I work as both a server and bartender on different occasions, so he may have assumed that I was working as a bartender that evening, which is not correct." as a bartender that evening, which is not correct. Thirteen, I am familiar with the two women that are the subjects of this matter, and that they have both been at the restaurant on numerous occasions before April 29, 2017, and after said date with no incident. Fourteen, although I did not serve the two women's table on the evening of April 29, 2017, I did walk by their table and converse with them on more than one occasion. Fifteen, neither of these women were intoxicated while at Karens on the evening of April 29, 2017, or the morning of April 30, 2017. Sixteen, in fact, I spoke with both women when they were leaving Karens, and they were speaking clearly, joking with each other, and walking in a steady, normal manner with no signs of intoxication. Seventeen, whenever these women are at Karens, they always get along and joke with each other in a playful manner, and I have never witnessed them intoxicated, arguing, or fighting with one another. Signed under the penalties of perjury by Kevin Gilhelm." Thank you, Mr. Mayo, for letting me do that. Appreciate that very much.
Mr. Mayo, why don't you...
Let's see if there's any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No, Mr. Mayo, I don't have a statement on that question. What I'm seeing here, I've been on this board for 14 months, I haven't seen anybody else here but you for violations like this, or questions of this magnitude. In November, you were before the board. Two weeks after that, I happened to go to Karens to have a beer with my wife. You were behind the bar drinking a wine. In March, I was the person, the town official, that observed somebody outside the sidewalk having a Bud Light, smoking a cigarette, you know. And now, these two instances, you know, I have a 13-year-old daughter. I'm afraid to take her in there after 8 o'clock on a weeknight. I wouldn't do that to her. So, have you had cameras installed to protect yourself?
Absolutely.
I mean, if, can we go back and look at the footage of need be to, see what goes on?
Absolutely.
Okay. You know, I'm concerned, we're trying to foster, we beat up, you know, the farmer's market, you know, about a vendor downtown. No, you did well.
You dropped the questions.
You're absolutely right. I want to foster, I want to grow that downtown here. You have an ice cream shop two doors down, you have a gift shop, you know, three doors down.
Sakura.
Yeah, we have Sakura. I mean, we have a great nucleus downtown with those businesses. I want to see, I want to see you be successful. I really, really do. But this has got to stop. You know, and it's got to stop now. I don't want to see you in here ever again, unless you're coming in to tell us how great your business is. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
I agree with you as far as the first incident goes. I mean, if it wasn't noticed, then with the open bottles, then that's not part of my consideration for tonight. I will, and I will say that, I think that's a tricky one. I don't know exactly, I don't know that you can necessarily tie those bottles directly to Karens. With this one, I think what throws me a little bit is, and I appreciate the fact that this is hearsay, you know, as are all police reports, unless you have, you know, someone directly testifying, so that's a given, and we're not at a trial here. And I appreciate the affidavit of this employee, because I do recognize that, you know, there can be mistakes in police reports, you know, there's a lot of them that are generated, and from time to time, you might find a narrowing them. But what throws me about it is the direct observations of the author of this report, you know, talking about the fact, "I observed, you know, them to have glassy and bloodshot eyes. As I spoke with them, I could detect a strong odor of an alcoholic beverage emanating from both of their breath, and both parties weren't steady on their feet." So, I guess for me, it's less an issue of were they fighting or playing around, but more an issue of, I don't, I think it's uncontroverted that they left Karens, and it's uncontroverted that they were observed in this state by a police officer. So, I guess the circumstances don't really matter as much to me, so long as I know that they had been at Karens, they had consumed alcohol at Karens, and then they had been outside of Karens in this state, which was clearly an intoxicated one. And maybe it would be a little bit different had Karens called the police and said, you know, if the theory was, well, these people came inside intoxicated, it sounds like they had been there for some time. And if that's the case, I don't, I find it hard to believe that they would have been allowed to stay in Karens had they not been intoxicated, or had they not grown more intoxicated over the course of their stay in Karens. So then, for the police to come and observe them as they did, and again, uncontroverted that they came out of Karens, I think that probably meets the standard, you know, of a preponderance of evidence that's based upon that. And that bothers me only because I want to see, I want to see Karens succeed, and that's what kills me about it, and that's why it's a really tough call. But, you know, as a selectman, I have to look at, all right, our standard is a preponderance of evidence. That's not a particularly high standard, but I think it's been met in this incident, based upon, if we're to take what the police officer, you know, in this report states as truth, and I do believe it to be, at least as far as the police officer's direct observations. I mean, that's, they're trained for this exact thing, and if there was a mistake, it was a bartender or a server, I frankly think that's inconsequential. I know it speaks to, okay, maybe this isn't a completely accurate report, but what I care about the most, what I zone in on, is what those direct observations were. And those observations were made as these people had left Karens, and no one's disputing that, so there is a proximate, you know, cause there. And I'm sorry, because, you know, this establishment, I want to see it be awesome. I want to see it be like the best place in Wakefield. I, you know, I, but, you know, we can't have this stuff going on, and I just don't see a way around it.
If I may, Mr. Mayo, on that, if I may.
Like Ed, I'm not, the inconsistencies to me aren't substantial, and the fact that someone called in that two women were fighting, two women were yelling at each other and calling each other by the C-word, so a passerby may think that's a fight. That's not how I joke with my girlfriends. So, that doesn't bother me that they might have been joking around. I think the officer's observations are very specific, and I also think the fact that the officer took the time to figure out that Kevin was sober to let this other gentleman drive. It's not like he made, you know, he was trying to get the women home safe. So, I'm not, you know, this evidence, I'll agree with Ed. The other evidence, in my gut, do I think they came from Karens? Absolutely. Do I think they were drinking at Karens? Absolutely. But from a preponderance of evidence, I think this one has it. And like everyone else says, we want businesses to succeed, but there's just been a lot of issues.
Any other questions from the board? Just a quick question. The time in the restaurant on the April 28 incident, any idea how long those two guys were in the restaurant? Just, and that doesn't prove anything, I'm just wondering, were they there for two hours, three hours, 42 minutes? I know it doesn't mean that they were actually drinking either, but just curious how long they were there. It's, okay, that's fine. Mr. Mayo, do you have...
Yeah, my comment is, is that the standard is a preponderance of the evidence. I think in both instances, you have patrons that said they were drinking at Karens, the April 28 one, as well as the April 29th and 30th one. I think this is of great concern, and I think, I agree with what Selectman Dombrowski said and what Selectman Santos said. And last time, unfortunately, these are difficult hearings, I know. I think the board pleaded with the licensee, "Anytime there's an issue, please call the police, that's what they're there for." You know, we might not be here today on one of these issues had the police been called. I mean, they said that the manager was aware that they left, went out and looked for them. Well, they were two doors down, according to this, a few doors down. I mean, so, I don't, you know, I appreciate saying, "Hey, we know they left," but the first call should have been to 911 at that point, and the second one as well. So, my recommendation to the board is, I think that on both incidents, and I look at them as incident one and incident two, that the threshold was made, that was a preponderance that people were sold alcohol that were intoxicated, in my opinion, my recommendation.
Interesting, to Tony Mullen's point, though, in terms of the notice piece, if one incident wasn't noticed, I don't want to...
Well, it was, it was notice as sale to an intoxicated person in the notice.
Okay. So, those are clear. I just wanted to have it conflated.
The open container, not even...
Right, that's okay. Right, exactly. Right.
Chairman, this, I want to go back to the police incident here. The council here talks about sobriety and whatnot. We don't have a BT mandate here. We're going on the observations of our police, our trained police officers, who, in their report, repeatedly said that they're unsteady on their feet, twanging, stepping, and side to side, slurred speech, all the classics of intoxication. The other piece is, and I know we're not dealing with the bottles, but council makes reference to the fact that those bottles could have come from anywhere else, when in fact, the proprietor mentioned she saw the two guys leave with the bottles. So, I mean, I just want to make it perfectly clear that I think this police report, regardless of the affidavit, okay, that we're talking about in the other matter, I think this report is spot on. And the officers do a pretty good job out there in what they have to deal with. What we have in this report, I believe, is what actually happened that night, and you can look at it any way you want. Now, let's go back to the next incident. We have an affidavit from a Peabody police officer, okay, who's not working with the Peabody Police Department at this point in time. We have an affidavit from him. Well, in essence, we have an affidavit in the police report. Neither one of those parties are here to talk about it. So, council is here, the proprietor is here, and the police chief is here. And I'm going to read to you nothing more than what council read in as an affidavit in the form of a police report, and I hope this board takes that into consideration when they take a look at this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Well, I think, you know, on the allegation of April 28, with all due respect, I don't see how you can find that someone was sure that they were well intoxicated in the bar. I just don't see how that could be found, with all due respect. On the other component, on the April 30th, you know, I think if we go to, if we go to any, I won't say any, but I'd say if we go probably to the majority of folks that have alcohol licenses, you're going to have people coming out that are going to smell like alcohol, and are going to have glossy eyes. Do they get to a level of intoxication? It's interesting that on, the other third person that was with these folks in there that evening was given a field sobriety test and passed, and was allowed to drive away with those two people. So, you know, I think we always hear, even on the news, you hear, "Have a designated driver." You know, maybe someone goes a little further than somebody else, not too far, but maybe a little bit further, designated driver. And, you know, so, at the end of the day, you know, like I said, you have to take the fighting aspect out, because that didn't happen, and when you look at it, you know, there was some responsibility by the people that were involved to a certain extent, with all due respect.
Anything to say, though, could be drawn in that... They were so intoxicated that they had to lean up against vehicles to even have a conversation with the police, and I think that takes it to a different level. I'm not suggesting, I mean, there's a reason we have designated drivers, because people are obviously impaired, and I think there's drunk, but then there's to the point of not even be able to stand, and I think that's where the concern probably lies, more than the fact that they had consumed alcohol. I think that's where the distinction is drawn.
So, I think, Mr. Chairman, we need to, on each instance, decide whether there was a serving of someone who was intoxicated. And then we can go to what? First being April 28, and the next one being April 29 slash 30. Right. Okay. Does the board have a finding that either on the 20, well, actually...
Take them separate.
Take them separate, okay. So, the 28th of April, does the board find that there's a need to have a sanction?
I think you just, I think you just find that whether someone was, whoever was intoxicated, then you can go to that.
Do we find, okay, do we find on April 28th that the allegations are true, that there was intoxication from those two individuals that night? Need a vote on that? Is there any other questions or anything before we vote? Okay, so, on April 28th, do you find...
Please, for a motion.
Okay. Do we have a motion that there is intoxication that we found on the April 28th at Karens?
So, the standard...
Yes.
By a preponderance of the evidence, yeah.
Did we find by a preponderance of the evidence whether an intoxicated person was served at Karens on April 28?
Yes. Do we have a motion on that?
Yes, just made.
Okay, a second? Okay. And all in agreement on that for a vote? Discussion, do you want a discussion? Okay.
I just think the one thing that stands out for me with, just before this vote, I think identifying the two, saying two unidentified male parties, I don't give that any weight, because we don't know who they are, we can't ask them any questions, you know, they're not even identified. But I do think the fact that, to the chief's point, that they both said that they had come from Karens, I think is pretty compelling, they being the people at issue here. So, on balance, I've weighed those two things. You know, I don't give a lot of weight to unidentified reports, but I do give a lot of weight to what these subjects had reported to the police, and I do believe the police were accurate in their reporting in that way.
But they weren't intoxicated when they said it.
Understood.
With all due respect.
Okay, so, we need a vote that the 28th, that the two individuals were intoxicated coming out of Karens, to a best of our ability to determine that. Do we, do we agree on that? By a preponderance, thank you.
Ask for... You need to know how people vote.
Right. Show of hands.
Yes.
Yes? Yes. Okay, so, five, five zero.
Also, we would be looking for a finding on April 29th or April 30th, that by a preponderance of the evidence, alcohol was sold to intoxicated patron or patrons.
Someone...
And vote?
I think they were overserved. Yeah, I think that was the issue. That, yeah.
And vote to that extent? Okay, it's just five zero again.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on both instances, the board has met the first crong and has stated that by a preponderance of the evidence, that Karens sold alcohol to an intoxicated person. Therefore, we go to the sanction phase. During the sanction phase, the board, we do have a regulation. This would be a first offense being, I guess, April 28th, to take them chronologically. April 29th would be the second offense. I think all of the members have a copy of this in their package.
Yes.
First offense would be two consecutive days, a warning to two consecutive day suspension of license. The second offense, if it occurred within two years, this certainly occurred within two years, three to seven consecutive day suspension of license. During this portion, the board is certainly can consider past history of findings or violations, the severity of the offense, the culpability of the licensee and/or its managers, and any steps the licensee has taken to remedy the violation. So, I'd ask for, do you have to...
I have a comment, and I raised it to Steve earlier. I dealt, we dealt with a lot of these in the Board of Health, and the, why I'm hesitating in thinking, wondering if it's both a first and a second offense, is because for the first offense, it's a warning to two consecutive days of a suspension. So, I'm not sure, and there might be, I should probably know this, if there's precedents or there's rules, whether we can take two offenses that happened next to each other and consider them a first offense and a second offense, or is that just considered in total as a first offense? Because typically, when I think of offense, there's a finding on that, and then there's a, you know, there's, you impose the warning or the suspension, and then if something happens again, it would be the second offense. So, that's my, that's what I'm not sure of, whether this can be taken as a second, if we can do it as a second offense.
Mr. Mayo?
I can answer. I did speak to Town Council Mullen about that, and he said if the board does find two distinct violations, they certainly could be addressed as a first and second violation and punished accordingly. And Tom's words to me, they were two different instances, they were two different evenings, so...
Should we have discussion on the actual subject matter for the warning, two consecutive days slash second offense altogether? Should we discuss that? Seems like it would be appropriate to, because Leanne's point is well-taken, I think, that in October, there was enough gray matter that no one, no one agreed to anything, they just...
That would just be, I'm not...
Exactly, just gone. And Tony mentioned, just call the police next time. I mean, that was the impetus there.
I think, you know, if the board is uneasy on the sanction phase, you could, because I did talk to Tony Mullen about this, you can decide to close the...
I did talk to Attorney Mullen about this, you can decide to close the, I guess, the public part of the hearing, or to close the hearing and deliberate at the next meeting when Town Council is here to get his opinion on that. Board could do that if they wish.
Should we vote on that? Is that something that?
We're looking for, we're looking between, if we take two, it's a warning up to seven days. That would be between first and second offense. So probably, you know, what folks are thinking on doing, we could take care of it tonight, unless someone wants to perhaps go up to the seven days, which would be, you know, the worst thing that could happen to Karen's.
Technically, I think you're actually up to nine days possible for a suspension. I think you probably could.
You could do two and then consecutively.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying pulling you down the road, I'm just saying that I think by the bylaws, it's the two plus the seven. Do we have enough information to take a vote on this? Is this something that we're all comfortable with at this time? I mean, the two five zero votes were pretty self-explanatory, how we feel about the situation.
I think we have to talk about whether we think a suspension is in order. If so, how long of a suspension? I mean, that's what we have to vocalize right now.
Right. So does anyone have any comments on the warning slash two consecutive days slash up to nine? Any?
I guess, you know, pointing to the considerations that Mr. Mayo had pointed out, I know that Ms. Wheeler had indicated that she had had someone there at the door Thursday's, Friday's, Saturday's, is that right? I guess it's my question is for Ms. Wheeler and then for the chief. When did that go into place? And chief, have you noticed any difference since that's gone into place? Has that actually been a mitigating, you know, factor that has improved things, or are they the same? So I guess Ms. Wheeler, the date first and then the chief.
The date of?
You put someone at the door.
What was the date of?
It was April 28th.
So it was the 29th that it started?
The next day.
So even with the person in place on the 29th, this incident still happened on?
Oh, no, no, the person that left with containers was on the 28th. So the 29th, she put someone at the door and made sure no one would sneak out with open containers.
But the issue we have, the second issue was on the 30th, though, right? Which would have been the day after that person was in place.
Whatever the last, the second issue was.
So you know it was after the second issue, you just don't know the exact date. So if we say April 30th was the second incident, you're saying the person went the day after April 30th?
When the police came and talked to me, I said, "I will take care of it," and I had someone at my door the next day.
So it was after the women fighting? Because the women fighting, as I understand, was the latter of the two.
That's right.
So you had a bouncer in place after the women were fighting? Or between the guys with the beers and the women fighting? When did that?
I think the women fighting for the guys with the beers.
If I read this correctly, that women fighting were at 1:30 in the morning, and what time do you typically close on a Saturday night or Sunday morning clock? So the?
That was April 30th, right?
Considering that doorman would have been off duty at that point?
He does not leave until our doors are locked. He walks out the last of the people to their first.
So why don't we say that's from May 1st onward, anyway? Maybe the chief could, and I'd give it help for us to understand.
I don't know the doorman, I haven't heard anything, nobody relayed that to me, my patrols haven't told that to me. I've had a conversation with the offices about this, getting ready for tonight's hearing, has been no mention. We do have foot officers that walk the square on occasion. I have no information of anybody working the door. As far calls out there since May 1st, I don't think we have been there. If we had been, I certainly would have forwarded the report over to the selectmen. So we haven't had any complaints, but then again, I don't know for a fact, nobody has told the police department if anybody's working the door at count.
Okay, so the question is, it seems like all I've gotten from the board, I guess, last fall, they're really encouraging you to reach out to the police, you call 911 pretty immediately. It seems like the chief has been very open about letting, "Come to us, let us help you." But these things have continued to happen since the fall, and I guess, you know, why is it that you haven't been more, you know, proactive in reaching out to the police pretty immediately to help you out?
I have, I've called, well, obviously not on these two matters, one I wasn't there for. But I have called them in the past, I said, "A guy just left, I wouldn't serve him, he'd be left upset." And they came, and he wasn't there. I called them another time, and I said, "There's a guy that I don't recognize that's been milling about, making people uncomfortable, he's outside my building, outside, he's not inside." And they said, "Okay, well, if he comes in and you don't want him there, call us and let us know." You know, when the open containers, I said to them, "I know they left, I tried to get them." I said, "I couldn't find them." And he said, "Well, you should have called us." And I said, "You're right, I should have." You know, I thought it was, they were gone. I thought it was too late, I don't know. That one time, it didn't occur to me.
Two weeks ago, I received a complaint from a member of the board on trucks parking and unloading on Main Street to go into Karen's, as well as another establishment. And I took it upon myself to take a walk over there and have a conversation with Leanne. And I had a conversation about the trucks unloading on Main Street, it wasn't going to happen anymore, I mean, we just can't have Main Street blocked. There's a perfect opportunity to exchange a conversation about doorman or any other problems. I never heard anything about it, I never heard anything back from Karen's on the other issue that I was over there in person talking about. So, I mean, there has been an opportunity, and has been a position of the police department to reach out. And quite frankly, the conversation ended when I left Karen's that afternoon, nothing further on. So I have no information on anything that we're talking about right now. Nothing official has come to the police department, and it was a perfect opportunity for the proprietor to say to the police chief, who was in her business at that point in time.
Any further discussion? Anne, I think.
No, I think we just have to talk about what we want to do.
Right. So in regards to sanctions, again, we voted five zero twice on the two different incidents, April 28th and 29th slash 30th of April.
I've done this in the past.
Sure.
It's so difficult, because you certainly don't want to impose a suspension that will cripple a business.
Right, absolutely.
Folks are talking suspensions as opposed to a warning. But you want to do a suspension that sends the message, because sending the message financially, it sounds like it's the only way that's really going to make our point. So that's where I'm coming in on. I don't, if I do vote for suspension, and I think that's where I'm leaning, I don't want it to be such that it destroys Ms. Wheeler's business, that we don't want to do that. I think it needs to be greater than one day. I'm not comfortable with going up as far as certainly five days, or four days even, I don't know. But it also can't be a Monday and a Tuesday night. That's, you know, we talked about that at Board of Health when we called. We can, we do.
We do, yeah. I mean, in combination, just to throw this out there, in combination, the warning and the two-day, two consecutive day suspension, combining those as two, as Anne had suggested earlier, may be, may be the option we take. I think certainly, three to nine is, that's way too prohibitive and way too costly for a business. It's too extreme, even though what's happened, what we can determine has happened, is something we don't want the town to take lightly. We have to be very forceful, I think, and.
If I may.
Sure.
In order to follow the policy that you have in front of you, the minimum for the first offense would be a warning.
Right.
And then the minimum for the second offense, in my opinion, would be three days consecutive.
I also think we need to impose it, because other businesses are working very hard to not let highly intoxicated people stumble out or to serve them. So I do think we have to let people understand, we recognize that, and this is, this is hopefully a unique issue that will be, will continue. Anyone thinking numbers? Or just?
I'm starting off with two days.
Steve just pointed out, though, Mr. Mayo pointed out that it's either a combination, it's either, if you have two incidents you agree with at the five zero vote, I think you have to do a minimum of three days. Is that correct?
As I read the policy, yes. First offense can be a warning to, two, second is three to seven.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the board on the sanction issue?
Sure.
I'd just like to point out that the town code references the first offense, second offense, and third offense. It references as far as penalty representing guidelines for action to be taken. So I think there is some room for the board to vary off of that, there's not a hard line, number one. Number two, as I've mentioned at the beginning of this hearing, my client does take this seriously, and we respect everything that's represented, certainly the police chief and the police department, does a great job for the town, and it's a difficult job. Her goal moving forward, because that's what we want to do here, is we want to move forward, is to, as I mentioned, is to work with the licensing authority and the police in a good way to have the business represented well. So I do want to say to the board, and perhaps it's something you'll consider on your sanction determination, no matter what your board determines, Leanne's not going to appeal it. And I'm going to put that on the record, because one of the offices is to appeal it to the ABCC, and to request a stay, and that's not going to happen. Her goal is to leave here tonight and not look back, move forward with her business and move forward with the town. So I think that would be helpful.
I appreciate that. But the challenge I have is the fact that this apparently was addressed recently, it's last fall, and if, you know, you're sitting there addressing this issue, I'd have to think from last fall forward, you'd have like the fear of God to not do this again, you know, and to have two incidents happen like this. I mean, we're talking about, you know, it sounds like officers basically getting assaulted, you know, trying to book these belligerent drunks, basically, that they're having to take care of. And my understanding is that these similar incidents aren't happening in other establishments, either in frequency or intensity. And I think that, you know, that's a concern, and like, I am delighted to hear that there's someone, that'll be at the door Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I think that was probably one of the issues, that it was easy in and out. I'm a little concerned that the chief wasn't aware of it, and there's been no observation of that. You know, I'll take you at your word that there was someone at those three nights, and I think that's a positive step forward. I want to see this board work with you, but we also have to keep in mind that, you know, we have a police force that we have to be, you know, looking out for as well, and their time shouldn't be occupied regulating, you know, this bar every weekend. And, I mean, the chief has reached out, you've been advised to reach out, so it's really tricky. I mean, I want to see things going forward in a proactive way. I think you're on the path to that, but if it weren't for what happened in the fall, I think I would have seen this a little bit differently tonight, but I think there was a fair warning given then. And I think there should have been a bouncer probably last fall, if that were the case, you know? This is hard.
You all said it? Chief?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to refer your attention to a letter of March 27, 2017, regarding, it's from Mr. Mayo to Ms. Wheeler, and if you read the second paragraph, it says, "Unfortunately, this is not the first time that behavior has been reported to the licensing authority, the Board of Selectmen, which may constitute a violation of said license. The Selectmen view this issuance and enforcement of LECA licenses in the town of Wakefield very seriously. We do not expect nor will we tolerate any further infractions." That's March 27, 2017.
So I guess we're at the sanction phase. What, do we, any other questions, comments? Anyone?
I would make a motion for a number of days, consecutive days to be suspended. I would make a motion that the suspension be for three consecutive days.
Second, someone?
Discussion?
Discussion, sorry.
Can I? Sure. And I know it's semantics, but a warning for the first one, just to keep the record straight.
Certainly, and that we impose a warning for the first incident. I redo my motion. I move that on the first incident, we impose a warning, and on the second offense, that we impose a three-day consecutive suspension. Second.
Any motion?
We have a question. If we're talking about days, at what point do we do that?
Then next.
Right. So Anne has the first violation to be a warning, and the second to be a three-day notice.
Suspension.
Suspension. And do we have a second? Do you have a second? Second. And all in favor of that? And I show five zero again. So the first to be a violation imposing a warning, the second to be a three-day notice of suspension against Karen's. And next phase is the timeframe. Should be fairly, Mr. Mayo, isn't it fairly imminent on that?
I'll make a suggestion to the board. I would suggest June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, get you out of the holiday weekend, and that'd be Thursday, Friday, Saturday. I know it hurts, but that's what I would suggest.
On that motion to have the suspension start from June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, do we have a second on that?
Can I address the board on that?
I think you need a motion.
A motion first, right, sir? Yes.
Yeah. I'm sure the board, well, I don't know if the board recognizes, but I will reference that those are her busiest nights. So to at least get part of those nights back would be helpful. We don't want a death sentence, with all due respect.
Issue open Monday through Sunday? I forget, seven days?
Six days.
Six days. So it closes on Monday? Monday.
Kind of like to give her one weekend day back.
So you're suggesting Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
Which dates are those, Tony? It would be?
The 31st, 1st, and 2nd.
I would second that motion.
We can do the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
I think that's the two weekend days, it's Friday, Saturday. Is it Thursday, Friday?
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend, the days of suspension be May 31st, June 1st, and June 2nd.
And what were those days again, Tony? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or is that?
They were Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I'll second your motion, Tony.
Okay.
Just to be clear, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
Yes.
No weekend nights?
Friday.
Friday. And Thursday's kind of a weekend.
That's what I was saying, the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th would be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I don't know how the Sunday converts to Wednesday.
Can I ask, what is the reason why we don't want to do a weekend night?
Well, in my mind, chief, Thursday's kind of a weekend, and Friday's certainly a weekend. So, I mean, downtown's hopping on a Thursday night with the establishments full, Friday's certainly a weekend for those of us that work Monday through Friday. So I'm not trying to give, I'm, I think, in my mind, we're including a weekend night in that.
The irony here is that the offenses are on weekend nights. When we talk about these events, these are on Saturday nights, Friday and Saturday nights. That seems to be where the issue is.
So we're doing it Friday?
We're going to be consistent, there have been other issues in this town where weekends have been part of the suspension. And I'm just trying to be fair and consistent from the perspective of the police department.
I'm considering Friday a weekend night.
I am too, but what I'm saying is the offenses have been, have also included Saturday.
I just want to make you, consecutive days, that we're not saying the 1st, 2nd, and 4th, it just?
But it has to be consecutive.
It has to be consecutive, true.
So we have two motions, I think, on the floor now, Thursday, Friday, Saturday sanction, and a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday sanction.
No, it's only one motion.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday was not a, that was not a motion.
It wasn't, okay, that was your suggestion, right.
Tony's motion, and I seconded Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. Any other comments on any other days, dates for the suspension? Okay, so, I don't know to what extent we have authority, unfortunately, Tom's not here, but I wouldn't really like the assurance that.
really like the assurance that the doorman will continue to be there Thursday, Friday, Saturday beyond this. Do we have that from you tonight on the record?
Absolutely.
So going forward, that will continue to be a presence on those nights until after the last patron is gone?
Always.
All right. So that's on the records of going forward if there are further issues?
Sure.
I think you could put that in.
As a stipulation. I would like that stipulation only because I think it benefits you ultimately, and it helps us to know that going forward, there's something more proactive. So I guess, I guess I'm looking to amend that motion to allow or to require that there be a doorman there on weekend nights.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for the 31st, 1st, and 2nd, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, for a suspension, as well as recommending it to require the doorman to also be present.
I think it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, Friday.
That's an expectation.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question.
Sure.
Okay. This board is saying that now the doorman is a condition of the license. Clarify that with me, where we are here, because I've got to be clear on this. I've got to inform personnel what is a violation. And, you know, I'm going to be quite honest with you, I'm not real happy as the police chief who has to enforce this stuff that we're doing, the days that we're doing, okay? But that's the board's decision, and I respect it. I don't agree with it, but I respect it. Now we're putting another layer on here. So I have to know if that's a condition of their license. Because if it's a condition of their license, and our personnel go there and do not see a doorman there, I have to know what my level of authority is going forward. So if we're going to make that a condition, please tell me tonight, why you can share that, and when and if we have to go there and they are not compliant, I'm not going to come back here and wrestle with that question like we're wrestling right now. So can someone clarify that for me?
I think it should be a condition. The motion, it's a condition of the process, yes. So we can make that a condition like a license, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so it will be a condition.
Okay, can I get a license?
And will I get a document that's going to, so that I can share with my staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, I think we just need a vote for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, 31st, 1st, 2nd, so May 31st, June 1st, June 2nd, to suspend the liquor license of Karen's for that time period, as well as the condition that they're required to have in their license, a doorman for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights as a minimum. You could have it all night, six nights if you wanted, but as a minimum. Does that sound right? And...
Can I actually suggest one other thing? I'm sorry.
Another, okay.
The bartenders are supposed to be tips trained. When was the last time they would have been gone through tips training?
They're all, everyone.
So what is it? Does that mean that they have to go back?
They're all there for the year.
I think it's a yearly tips.
I think they rotate. I don't think it's like per se for the whole, I think it's per individual has their own tips or...
Right, exactly. But I'm saying that all of them are current with their tips training?
Okay. So I think we're, I think we're all set for a vote. So at this stage, again, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the May 31st, 1st, and 2nd, have a sanction to remove their liquor license, and an addendum to require a doorman for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights as part of the license of Karen's. All in favor of that? Five, five zero again, Stephen.
Thank you very much, Albert.
As Tony eloquently said.
Mr. McGrath, just if I could, just on those days, the days of the sanction, we need the license brought into the town hall. So we'll hold it and then bring it back afterwards.
Yes. And we, just one final note. We do, as everyone was mentioning, we do love businesses in town. We want you to succeed, but just, it's not fair to the other businesses, as I think Ian mentioned. It just, it just sends a poor example since we're trying to be so tight, whether it's, whether it's a package store, restaurant, et cetera. We just have to be consistent and firm on violations.
We just want to make two points. Turn to the person behind you, chief. Make a lunch date with them. You know, establish, you know, some protocols, a relationship with them, foster this relationship. He's there to help. His boys, you know, and, you know, women in blue are there to help. So, and I never want to see you in this room again. I really don't. Because it won't be so rosy. Thank you. Thank you, Brian, for coming in.
Thank you.
Close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing?
We'll call.
We'll call.
Aye.
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 Maybe?
Aye.
Aye. So close, closing the public hearing.
Do you want to keep moving on the agenda, Brian?
Sure.
Just keep going.
Yeah. Where are we? Let's see.
We need approval to buy a bench from the Main Street program.
Right, which, which is perfect, anyway. Was there anyone here from Main Street? Or just, what's that?
Our chairman.
Still up there, twice.
Oh, our chairman, that's right. Okay, he's recusing himself again.
Sure.
Just a moment, Paul. Another recuse. This is to approve, to buy a bench from the Main Street program, the Board of Selectmen would like to buy a bench.
It was mentioned for the last meeting, Selectman Falvey mentioned buying a bench or benches.
Right.
Wasn't on the agenda. We can certainly, can, if the board wishes to do that, we can certainly authorize the expenditure of money from community block grant money, which we have money in there. It's $1,000 a bench.
Any, if you want to, discussion, or I think it's...
Go. I, you know, last time we talked about a vision and kind of a strategy, and I'd love to hear that before we commit. Because I do, I do think 20 benches is a lot. So I love that we have the money to invest in it, and I want to do it. But I don't know if right now is the time. So if there's a way, we can wait till we have a better vision from Main Street and from our end, then I'd prefer to wait on that.
I think we just postpone it.
Yeah.
Do you want to vote on that, do we just, okay, postpone it, okay. Don't get it going again on that one right now.
And we'll figure out a color of the bench of our...
I think that's, no, I think it makes a lot of sense. The vision is very...
They've also, they've also exceeded their goal. And so it's, they're not short funds to execute what they've identified thus far. So I'd like to, I want to support downtown as much as we can, but we can do that. I think the money's probably better spent at a later point in time when we know the next thing we need.
Right, no, I agree. And just to build on that, actually, on the next point, something that was brought up, and we can talk about it further, but having covering on some of the benches where bus stops are, that people stand out and wait for the bus, is that something, I know it's, buses are a state issue, but something we could talk about. So in addition to buses, covering it, so people waiting for buses, aren't standing in the rain and snow. So future vision conversation.
We'll add that to the inclement weather edition. Okay, moving on to requests from Lucius BB Memorial Library to donate library discards to the friends of the library.
Some of them.
And, vote, yes? Yes, yes. All in favor? Yes, five zero. Mr. Chairman, you want to pick up what we left off?
Whatever you feel.
So we're down to, as I said, to forgive where the Lucius BB Memorial...
First one D?
Yeah.
Do we want to continue, or do you want to...
Why don't you run through page one, and then we'll get...
Okay, so we have item D on this right now, a request from Lucius BB Memorial...
We just voted, yeah.
Okay, so the request from, we're down to E now.
Yep.
Request from Lucius BB Memorial Library to accept and expend the gift, or gifts to the library. Second, moving second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We also have a vote to approve a $326,775 sewer bond to be issued to the MWRA at 0% interest. Do we have a motion? Second, or favor?
On that one?
Oops.
That one actually needs to be read into the...
Okay, so.
I will, I'll take care of that as soon as I can find it. You jumped ahead a little bit. Sorry. It's okay.
You told me to go down to the other page.
No, no, you're right. Because this bond just needs to be read. It's a shoe up though.
The for sale of $326,775 for the sewer bond of the town dated June 19, 2017, of the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority. The authority is hereby approved, and the town treasurer, other appropriate town official, is authorized to execute on behalf of the town a loan agreement and a financial assistance agreement with the authority with respect to the bond. The bond should be payable without interest on May 15 of the years, and the principal amount as follows, 2018 through 2027, each year the amount of $32,677.50. Again, that is principal only, there's no interest charged, and that the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Town Treasurer are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them necessary to convene and to carry out the purposes of this vote.
That's my motion. Someone would...
Seconded. Any discussion on Mr. Mayo's motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. At this time, let us move into the scheduled public hearing that was supposed to be at 7:40. Thank you for being patient. Motion, please, to go into a public hearing, and then come back into our regular scheduled meeting. So vote. Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes, Mary.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Please introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the organ of Michael McCarthy, attorney with offices here in Wakefield. Here with me are Nancy Chichulo, the owner of Blue Moon Grill, which is a DVA, and her husband, Vinnie Vincent Vincenzo, who is the chef in chief, and is always in there in this, as is, as is Nancy. These are the Chichulos. It's, as you might deduce, it's a family-run business. It's a family-owned business, and it's probably, it's a family-style operation as well. So there you are, as I said, the property is the Blue Moon Grill, which you may know, down in Linfield, is a small 40-seat restaurant.
Or down in Wakefield.
Down in, did I say Greenwood?
You said Linfield.
Oh, did I really?
Yes, you did.
I might have just groped out here.
Wow.
In Greenwood, I apologize. In Greenwood. Oh, my God, I didn't even know I said it. The hour is late, that's my excuse. Down in Greenwood, I apologize. In Greenwood, 995 Main Street specifically. It's a 40-seat restaurant. It's, it's all table service. It is a, primarily, it's actually exclusively a breakfast and lunch restaurant. They open early. They typically close around 2:00. It is, it's a fairly well-known restaurant. It's, it's, it's a notable restaurant. Phantom Gourmet has featured it twice, and has called it the hidden gem, a term which you may be familiar with. They recently, the Chichulos recently improved the restaurant. They added a little space, put a little bit more money into it. And now what they would like to do, and obviously the reason we're here tonight, is to request a liquor license. The focus of the liquor license is to basically provide a service to existing clientele, the existing base of business that they've been asking for. So in other words, on the weekend, they might want a mimosa, or lunch, they might want a beer. The restaurant will stay a restaurant. It's not going to, it would not be a barroom. There would be no separate bar service proposed now or in, or in the future. It is exclusively table service. Obviously, everyone would be tips certified. The focus of that service, of the liquor service, would be fairly focused as well. It would be limited. The idea and the theme is essentially to offer three signature-type cocktails, and then a beer, a wine selection. But it wouldn't really be a, you know, place where you can go in and order a shot, or a, you know, a Manhattan type of thing. And Nancy can talk, Vinnie can talk more about the particulars if they'd like, if the board would like. But it's very focused, very limited. It's kind of exclusive, high-end. They're not proposing to open for dinner. It's going to be breakfast and lunch. They've, they tried dinner for a very limited time a while back. It's not something they're looking to do. So it's, it's essentially, as I say, to service their existing base. We don't see any sort of a pickup in, in volume or new clientele. It's a limited seating. There's 40 now. They typically operate fairly full. So we don't see a big impact that way either. So, you know, that's essentially it in a nutshell. As far as, you know, the criteria for approval, the fitness and character of the licensee, Nancy, the information's in the, in the packet. But she's been operating this business for seven years. There's, you know, there's always, parking is always tight. I know that there are parking issues, and, you know, if the board would like, we can address that separately. But this is type of like a chivo, chivo type of operation. It's going to be a family-run, you know, basically focused on locals and existing clientele, not a bar. And, you know, she's, getting back to Nancy, she's been running this operation for seven years. She said that she's there all the time. It's a great restaurant. As I say, it's earned notoriety in a favorable way. As far as the site itself goes, it's in the business district. It's an existing restaurant. It's limited in size. It's located right on Main Street. And those are essentially the criteria, as you know, for consideration. But if there's anything, you know, you guys would like to add, that's, that's essentially it. If I missed that or anything?
Sure. I think you did a great job, but, so what, sorry, my voice is a little bit gone. What we want to do, my customers have asked for this. They want to enhance their meal with a couple of signature drinks or whatever, like a Bloody Mary or a mimosa. So these are the table, this is why I put them on the table, these are our juices, raw juices. And that's what I did three years ago, four years ago. Customers asked for it. We did it. So what I want to do, this will be a little bit bigger. This is double-sided right now. So on one side, I'll have three summer, you know, in the summer, it will be different, a Bloody Mary, a mimosa-type drink, and maybe a third one, a beer and a wine, maybe a couple beers and a couple wines, right on there. That's it, right in the middle. So that's what I want to offer. I would want to do, and I plan on doing, I just don't know how to do it yet, a two-drink limit. Because I want to turn the tables the same way I'm turning them now. So that, that is what I want to do. I want them to have their meal. They want to enjoy their drink with their meal. They're not just going to have a drink. They're not going to be able to have a drink and not eat. And also, what I want to say too, is we've investigated a lot of restaurants, breakfast restaurants, that do have and serve alcohol. And we're different. We just don't have eggs, you know, and bacon, and home fries. We have a very special menu. I have a few here. I don't know if you guys want to look at them, but the whole front here is our specials. So we just like to be set apart a little bit from it. And again, it's an enhancement to the meal. It's not, it's not a barroom. They're not going to be able to just sit and drink. We're going to have this nice little thing with a few drinks on it, and that's it. It'll be the same turnover, because that's the way I'll work it. And I've investigated it for probably about six months. And that's how I horn it. And lunchtime, same thing. If someone wants to come in for lunch during the week, people like to have a glass of wine at lunch. Vinnie's creations is, his Italian flair is amazing. Someone, they want to have a glass of wine with it. Then they go back to work. You guys, I'm sure, have been to business meetings, or just gone out to lunch with colleagues. You see people, they want a glass of wine to enhance their meal. And that's just, that's the type, that's all we're looking for. That's basically it in a nutshell.
Paul, may I ask a question?
Excuse me?
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
What is, what's the time of the license you're looking for?
We're looking for, well, the typical license under the statute, section 12, is 11:00 to 11:00, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We're not looking for any discretion past the 11. I know you can't shorten it up, shorter than 11. But we're looking to, for, you exercise the discretion on the lower end. So it would be from, starting at 8 is really what, what would like, 8 a.m. Again, we're not going to be open till 11. We're not going to be open typically past 2. But, so it would be 8 a.m. would be the start time, and it would be 11 p.m., just because the statute says it has to be 11 p.m.
Right.
So 8 a.m.
Okay.
Would be outside of the norm of 11, which would typically, you know, by default, be 11 a.m. But the whole focus is the morning. Thank you. I should have said that.
At this time, I'll open it up to the board. Do anybody have any questions that they wish to ask at this point?
Mr. May? Just to say, no, I think it's a great business. I have to apologize. I haven't been there, but everyone I know has been there and loves it, so now I have to go. But to...
But to expand a business, sounds great, especially in Greenwood. I think bigger and better businesses all over Wakefield, but also especially in Greenwood, it's great to see it grow. So, no, I just have the comment that I think it's wonderful, and I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Time-wise, definitely extend it backwards, not, you know, obviously you're a breakfast-lunch place, so that seems like a no-brainer to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do go there often, I live across the state. I recognize. Come in very often, we'll have to go there one day.
Yes.
Yeah. The call-ahead reservations is probably the best thing that you do, yeah. No, I think this is.
I had to do that a few years back, yeah.
I think this is great. Can you, Chairman, can you just talk a little bit, as a newer person on the board, we have a limited number of licenses, correct? And they.
I'm not sure what the actual number is at this point.
Six-four.
Six-four?
Six-four.
And they go with the location.
Location, it's not, it's not, it's not based upon, you get a license, you can take it anywhere, it's for that one address.
In business.
In business.
In business.
Yeah.
So, if someone new were to come in and take over, they're gonna have to apply for the license.
So, in that area, Fangs has one now.
Portobello's.
Portobello's, that's right, okay.
And Doc's.
Doc's.
Doc's and Chibos.
Hawaii. On Chibos, that's right.
Chibos.
Chibos, yes.
Yes.
Is Doc's open for breakfast?
No.
No. Any concerns from any of your neighbors? First, full disclosure, I had breakfast on Friday.
I do.
Exactly. Any concerns on any of your neighbors?
Yes, I think some of the neighbors are here, and they can speak.
Right. We have an odd.
But there are parking, there are parking concerns.
To me, they're one to the other.
Right, right.
I guess, just to clarify, what your vision is then, you're saying, basically, using the alcohol as a meal enhancement, so.
Exactly.
In terms of turning tables, you expect the same amount of foot traffic coming through?
Absolutely.
Is that right?
I'm making the bill bigger, and I'm enhancing the meal, but they'll be out at the same time.
So, it's not like you're gonna have people that, it's not like you're not having a bar set up, you're not having people coming in for that purpose, so.
Two drinks, minimum. I'm maximum, sorry. Not minimum, not minimum, that'd be fun, that'd be fun to do. Two-drink maximum, Saturday, Sunday, no, no, definitely. I can't make people sit longer, that wouldn't do, I wouldn't do well.
But basically, it's the same, it's the same.
So, it's like, it's.
It's not like you're driving more foot traffic.
Right.
No, and, you know.
Giving, giving, right, giving existing clientele.
It works like this.
What they want.
The raw juices, it works just like this. These take time to make, okay? So, they probably take seven minutes to get to the table, because someone has to make a raw juice. This just enhanced it, it made the bill bigger, it didn't make them stay longer. So, if there's a two-drink maximum, I know my numbers, I know business, I know how to do it, that's what I'm gonna do.
The objective is to keep it the same.
It's the same, and I have to keep it the same, or I'd be shooting myself in the foot, I can't.
It's not like you're gonna, like, you're not gonna have longer waiting because of the traffic and all that. I guess, I'm just trying to.
Yes, exactly.
To answer your question, it's, yes.
And I thought about that long and hard, I had to.
Right.
Because that was a big, how am I gonna do this?
Right.
So, I think, you know, I know that I can do it.
Well, again, we focus a lot on downtown businesses, but, I mean, Greenwood is just as important as anywhere else within town, so, you know.
Thank you.
You guys, nothing but compliments from people that I know that go, and we need to be supportive of businesses generally, but also understand the concerns with neighbors, and that's why I'm asking about the parking piece. It sounds like net-net, we're not gonna have a difference in terms of the parking. It sounds like if there are enforcement issues, that's a different issue.
Correct.
But not impacted by whether you have a liquor license.
Exactly, same traffic.
Okay.
Yep.
Correct, thanks.
Do you have waitstaff that's under 21?
They're bussers. I have one buster that's under 21 now.
One?
Yeah. But he just cleans the tables, yep. Yep, a young man.
So, just to bring it to what I understood, the license you explained is a 12-hour license, 11:00 to 11:00.
License, yeah.
License, you're requesting it to be an 8:00 a.m.?
8:00 a.m., yeah.
You can't change.
We can't change.
You can't change the end game, but you can, you're requesting an 8:00.
8:00 a.m. rather than what would be 11:00.
You're staying with the 2:00, be out there by 2:30 that you are now?
That's the point, that's the definite point.
So, the hours of operation will remain the same. You're proposing to enforce on your own volition, the two-drink maximum?
Yes.
In order to make sure that your clientele moves in and out?
Absolutely.
Any further discussion from members of the board? If not, I'm going to open it up to the public for comments from the public. Anyone wish to speak from the public?
Should I stand here? Paul?
You gotta give him a mic. There you go. Introduce yourself, please.
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Attorney Michael Casoli, representing the Casoli Family Trust and Matt W. Trust, which are basically two entities that own the Greenwood Plaza. I guess my biggest problem here would be is if they do open for dinner, I mean, they're already open now for breakfast and lunch, but it does affect us, people do parking a lot, and it does cause us minimal problems in the morning and the afternoon. Our biggest problem would be at night. At night, the mall in Greenwood is extremely, extremely busy. If we start losing 10, 5, whatever, parking spots to people outside the lot, it's really gonna affect the businesses in our lot, especially the quick-turn businesses like Riviera Tanning, the liquor store, the convenience store. These are stores that people go in, 5, 10 minutes, in and out, and if they drive into a lot, and there's no place to park, they're gonna go to the next liquor store, they're gonna go to the next convenience store, they're gonna go to the next sub shop, they're gonna keep on driving, and it's gonna affect our businesses. So, I don't know if we can put a limit on when it can close, or what. I guess it has to be 11:00 to 11:00, or 8:00 to 11:00, but I'd like to keep it so that it would not go into dinner. Otherwise, I don't have a problem with it, and I don't think anybody else in our mall does. But if it runs into dinner, we're definitely gonna have an issue with it.
Ed?
It just seems like that's more of a backdoor way, though, of trying to prevent them from serving dinner. That's irrespective of whether they have a liquor license, because if they were here, if they just wanted to open up for dinner, they could, and you'd have the same issue. So, I don't see how the two are connected.
Well, if they open up for dinner, and they have alcohol, it's more of a draw, so it's gonna put a bigger impact on the parking situation at that time of day. I mean, you guys said you're concerned about that, you are concerned about the fact that it is affecting us, and we've put up signage, we've had somebody stand in the lot and educate people and tell them, like, you know, they can't park there, and it means some people do obey it, some people listen, some people will obey the rules, and other people just read the sign and walk right by it, and that's a problem.
They have signs posted in their restaurants as well.
They do too.
Three sides.
In the window, in the window.
On Saturdays and Sundays, any patron that walks in my restaurant, I ask them if they're in the Greenwood Plaza, and there actually is the general public, I can't control what they do, they risk, you know, we've all done it, right? It's not right. I probably get maybe three now, four a day.
Not many.
On a Saturday or Sunday, during the week, not many, but I have the signs up, and I say, you gotta get towed, you gotta go, I ask them. So, I've done my due diligence, I can't control the general public at all. So, it sounds like, you know, everybody has a parking issue.
Yeah, there is.
Right, we have, they have their lot, we have Main Street, I mean, it is what it is, you know.
Parking is, well, first of all, and I would think, I would like to add, we are sensitive to the concerns of the bodies, and we appreciate Mr. Consoli.
Yeah, I enforce it.
As well as Riviera Tanning and everybody that's in there. They put a diligent effort into enforcing, you know, the parking restrictions. My client does too. There isn't probably a restaurant in the business district on Main Street in Wakefield that has adequate parking. If parking were a criteria, nobody would, none of the restaurants would have a liquor license. I would add, we did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for parking relief, just as Mr. Casoli and the businesses in his plaza have done, to get relief from the parking. So, the relief we have is similar to the relief they themselves have. But we, on the issue of the night, I would've made the same point, that they could do dinner now, I think the point's been made, but they don't intend to. So, there likely won't be an issue, and certainly, you know, we are sensitive, not to diminish any of the concerns expressed by the members, because they're legitimate. But, you know, if you're a restaurant on Main Street, or you're a restaurant on Water Street, or in the business district in Wakefield, there isn't enough parking. And if that were the criteria, nobody would be able to have it. That said, we'll continue to try to enforce the no parking in anybody else's land, which is obviously a very reasonable request by the abbot or Mr. Casoli and his tenants. We're sensitive to it, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yes.
We appreciate it. We don't think it's a, you know, a criteria to deny the license, I don't think he's suggesting that, but, but I just wanna make sure that it's stated that we're sensitive to it, and the plan is really not to have dinner, although that can't be a restriction.
Michael?
Hello?
Once again, my question is, there legally can't be a restriction on the time limit to close, so it's 11:00 no matter what. Once again, that's it. So, go from 8:00 to 11:00. If that's what the license is, I'm just asking.
That would be yes.
But I think it'd be a bigger issue if, say, they were, they had a bar there, because then that would mean that you'd have patrons that may go there just to sit at the bar, and if that's, if I'm hearing that's not the case, I think it's a different issue, because it's a restaurant, you know, and the fact that they're adding alcohol, it is an enhancement, but I think people are going there for food primarily, not to just sit there and drink. I'm imagining that you don't want people to go.
It's a restaurant.
So, that's where I think it's, I get your concern, I mean, parking is really tough there, and I understand that a lot, I've seen it, I've parked in it when I've, you know, gone to your businesses, and it's something we, as a board, have to figure out, but I don't see it necessarily directly connected with what these folks are doing for a liquor license. So, I, it's noted, and I recognize, and I sympathize with what you're saying, because it's not ideal people, there are violators, and we need to figure out how to fix that problem. And I'll commit to you that, you know, as a board, we'll try our best to figure it out, because it needs to be, for all the businesses there. These guys, all the guys in the plaza, down from you guys, they all, we have to fix it.
Tina Barossi, my husband, I own Riviera Tanning. It sounds wonderful what they wanna do, but again, as Mike was saying, if they do, right now, the plans are not to be open for dinner. Plans change, they might be so successful, and yeah, when the word gets out, gee, you can go to Blue Moon now and get a mimosa, or you can get a Bloody Mary, maybe the hours will change till 3:00. Well, you know what, we have so many customers, maybe let's change till 4:00. It does make a difference. The difference between our lot and downtown, we pay the rent for our lot, we pay the portion of taxes, we pay Mike to plow, it comes out of our pocket. Downtown, all the restaurants, they're all relying on the street. They don't have, no restaurant, does any restaurant downtown have their own lot that they pay rent for? I can't think of any off the top of my head. So, when you're saying it might not make a difference, we've been there since 2009, losing two spots, three spots makes a huge difference. When Mike redid the lot, and how many spaces were taken away from all the patios that they had to put in?
Well, we ended up with more, because we bought Chicken Shade, and then we lost some because of the fall of the lot, we had to do some island, and we did some patios to try to make it nicer, and obviously spent a lot of money to do so, but we have 60 spots now.
Our clients rented out in 20 minutes. I personally, over the few years, have been there on the weekend mornings, and personally have asked people who, they think if they park far away from Blue Moon Grill, our side of the lot, they can park there, because no one's gonna see them, and I've asked them, could you please move, you're not allowed here? I've been sworn at many, many times, and it's just, when you're paying the money to stay in business, you really need, we chose that spot, because there are very few parking lots in Wakefield, so we chose to open a business there, because we had our own lot, we didn't rely on street parking. If there's a business that relies on street parking, and yes, they have no control over what people do, but they have to have control over what their clients do. I don't wanna have to pay to pay Mike to plow the lot, and on a Saturday morning, have six cars parked there after a nice plowed lot that he spent all morning doing, and that I've been out there shoveling my own sidewalk for other people to use that they don't pay a dime for. It's just very frustrating, and if they do end up changing their plans, plans can change, y'all know that, if they do open for dinner, it's just gonna be, it's a nightmare. Sometimes you go over there at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock, it's a nightmare. People are everywhere, people are crashing into each other, people almost getting run over, it's just total chaos. The streets parked, it's madhouse. So, to add that to it, to add to another place to serve dinner, would be a disaster. Sounds wonderful, we'll do breakfast and lunch, I don't think it's really gonna make a difference for us, but if their plans change, they're being so successful, six months, a year from now, yeah, let's do dinner. It's gonna make a huge difference between us.
But you understand, they could do dinner right now, and you could have the same situation, right?
Patrons, if someone serves dinner and has alcohol, people will come. You know that.
Well, because they go to the.
I think they're gonna go for the meal probably more than the alcohol, the alcohol's a compliment to it, but I don't think they're wrong, because, and I'm not minimizing your concern, I understand that.
The extra hours that they're open.
Yeah.
Would put pressure on the whole area of parking.
But that's separate from the request they have before us, because they can be open after hours right now. They could do dinner right now if they wanted to.
But if they serve alcohol, it might, they might be more successful and choose to stay open for dinner. I'm not saying that might make a difference to alcohol, but if they do decide that they're so successful that, you know what, let's give it another run, now that we can serve alcohol, maybe we'll do better, maybe we will choose to be open for dinner. Nobody knows what can happen, if I'm not putting a limitation on it, it could certainly happen.
Well, I think the responsibility falls on us to figure out ways to address the public parking, because I agree with you, you guys pay a lot of money for that lot, I get it. You know, to the extent you guys can have better enforcement and have more towed, then I don't know, you know, that's your private.
It shouldn't be on our cost either.
No, I agree with you, I'm just saying, but, you know, so we'll have to figure out the public parking piece more, but I just, I still see it as like a bit of a separate issue from the request for a license for tonight's purposes, but I wholly know your concern.
But you understand what we're saying, the plans, there are no plans for dinner now, but if the plans change, 100% I guarantee you, I'll come back and talk to you, it will affect us. Thank you. But their plan for, it sounds wonderful, I mean, people would love to probably have a mimosa and Bloody Mary for breakfast, that's not gonna affect us. It's the dinner, I think by the later hours that we're concerned about if it weren't happening.
Are there any further discussions from the public at this time? There are two letters here that I need, that were submitted, that I would like to also There are two letters here that I need, that were submitted, that I'd like to also read into tonight's hearing. The first one is from Greenwood Wine and Spirits, addressed to this Lord. What notice to, it states, unfortunately, I will be out of town for a meeting on May 22nd for the public hearing with guidance of issuance of an on-premise liquor license to Blue Moon Grill. If the intention of Blue Moon Grill is to use the liquor license to enhance their brunch offering, I feel this would be a great addition to the community. Respectfully request the Board of Selectmen restrict the license hours to the Blue Moon's current hours of operation, which I believe ends at 2:00. However, if their intention is to extend the business hours to include dinner, I respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen table the request indefinitely on until such time as a town waiver can address the lack of parking for customers and employees into the Greenwood section of Wakefield. The next letter is from, and that was from Cynthia Newell, Greenwood Wine and Spirits. The next one was from Atlantic Audiology. We got in the request for the Blue Moon Grill's license. We at Atlantic Audiology, located at Greenwood Plaza, strongly object to permitting a liquor license to the Blue Moon Grill. It is our opinion that, given the current parking situation in the Greenwood Plaza parking lot, any additional traffic we're making are already extremely busy lot, unmanageable to an unsafe degree. Although patrons of the Blue Moon Grill are not allowed to park in the Greenwood Plaza lot, we know from previous experience that many will ignore the posted signs. These cars will need to be towed to allow spaces for the patrons of the Greenwood Plaza businesses that are open evening hours. We don't want our patrons to be inconvenienced by having to find parking outside the lot, because customers of the Blue Moon are taking spaces. This would also inevitably lead to increased costs to the business owners at the cost of monitoring of the lot will be passed on to them. Sincerely, Marion Sesatia, Office Manager, Atlantic Audiology. With that being said, are there any further comments from the Board of Selectmen? And there's nothing here from the audience. I would like to close the public hearing portion, just to go on with the...
Bring it back to the board.
Bring it back to the board. So I have a motion to close the public hearing?
You don't need that.
Don't need that? So move. Okay. Okay, so let's, I'll entertain a motion then, on the request before us, for the all-liquor license at Blue Moon Grill, as presented to us and as explained to us. I move. Second. Are there any suggestions or comments from the board as to, any additions, whether we just, are we all set with the way it's drafted? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, can we close the public hearing by a roll call vote, please?
Good luck.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everyone. Let us move. Thank you. Let us move on, please, to the next item on the agenda, which is 3G, board liaisons. Everyone should have received a letter in your packet as to the positions which you chose. And as far as duties, Mr. Mayo, I believe, has talked to all of you in regards to what your position as liaison would be, to a degree?
To a degree.
To a degree. Thank you. Thank you. Bench approval for Sentinel Benefits and Financial Group at 100 Quanapawett Parkway.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Also on the table tonight, I did give you a little sheet that has the, it has the exact X on it from Google Earth, and I did go out there today. As you all know, this is a bench that kind of went backwards and threw us. A party met with Conservation Commission, met with, actually met with DPW, who say they didn't have a problem with it, went out and bought a very nice, lovely, expensive bench, and have a big corporate unveiling scheduled, and then somehow said, oh my God, I need approval from the Selectmen. I also met with Friends of Lake Quanapawett. They are supportive of this venture, and they, however, have asked me to come up with a policy-driven statement that we can use going forward for benches around the lake, because they have a great interest in it. I will be circulating something. I'll ask a couple of board members for their opinion on it, see what they think. I've made a first pass, but it's a good group, and I recommend this approval.
Comments from the board?
I move that we approve the Sentinel Benefits and Financial Group bench at 100 Quanapawett Parkway.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion on the motion?
The only thing I would suggest is that, under the circumstances, this be allowed, but I think we should have a moratorium on further benches dedicated until we have guidelines in place that we can approve, work with Friends of Lake Quanapawett on it, so we're all on the same page, so we have an aesthetic that's consistent or least feels more uniform.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Similar to what I was saying about how Main Street situation, too, just so we have a handle, and maybe just have a handle of what's going on before it goes out. But I agree, too, that this is a great idea. It's a great person that passed away, and they did spend a lot of money, and they thought they were doing all the right things, all the way up to skipping the board's license, but I think that was just an accident. Like, I know it was an accident. And Friends of Lake Quanapawett also are very positive about it, which is a good sign.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the proposal? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you. So Traffic Advisory Committee recommendations on Melvin and Bennett?
Yes, Senior Packet, and was a request from the Traffic Advisory Committee to remove a stop sign on Melvin Street, the stop sign going northbound. For the simple reason is that, as people were going to that stop sign, that was on an incline, and it actually caused people to be revving their engines and stopping in front of a, and disturbing the neighbors, and actually did no good. It's kind of an overstopped intersection. Traffic Advisory Engineer went out there along with Lieutenant Scory and came up, and on your Google Earth, I have an existing and a proposed site. We will have a two-way stop warning sign coming further down. I think the neighborhood will appreciate that. We may have that neighborhood coming back in to look at some of the traffic issues in the area. Luckily, that whole area is being paved this summer. It's, all the gas work has been done, so I think people will be very happy in that area.
Excellent. There are a motion, please, to approve the Traffic Advisory Committee's recommended changes to the Melvin and Bennett Street area.
Second.
Moved and seconded and in discussion. Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on here is a license with the Comcast renewal.
All I can say is, thank God we can do these contracts for 10 years now, so we don't have to come back. Wakefield has three cable companies, as you may know, Comcast, Verizon, and RCN. And, you know, I think Verizon has the lion's share in Wakefield. This contract for Comcast, that's why you see an non-exclusive license, because we have other cable providers. Some communities just have one. It does allow people the ability to shop around. This is almost exactly the same contract that was signed before, with the exception that the dates are changed. It still carries the 4.5% pass through that you see on your cable bill, which is the franchise fee. 3.3% goes to local cable access, and 1.2% goes to the schools, percentage-wise. It also includes a facilities, or a capital funding for the local cable acts, a local cable company, of $250,000 over 10 years. That is in the contract. That is a reduction of the original contract, which was $300,000. And the reason why is Comcast's share has actually gone down 22% over that time. Tom Mullen negotiated this contract with the Cable Committee. He felt it was fair, and he wholeheartedly supports its approval from the board. And we'll be back with another one for another cable company, and I think another six months or a year.
So entertain a motion for approval?
I move that we accept the Comcast renewal license as presented in our packets.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Actually, I read the contract. It's 44 pages. So I had a couple of things. Unfortunately, Tom's not here tonight. I don't think it's the end of the world, but I noticed that the performance bond was only $25,000, and that seemed to be quite light, given, you know, what could be...
I think it's okay now, because there's no build-out going on. When they first came in, it would be an issue. But I will ask Tom that question, probably a statutory thing on that.
And the other question was, when I was talking about relying upon existing poles, I didn't note to what extent that locked us in for the next 10 years. I know Greenwood, for example, has a lot of utility poles. And if we were looking to try to bury those at some point, for example, is this the sort of thing that would, you know, I don't want to complicate things later on for us.
I'll tell you that we're burying poles at the head of the lake, and the only problem is Verizon. Comcast is going down on the ground with no problem, so we have past history with them. Verizon has some statutory protections that these others don't have.
And then I think finally, they provide a basic service to every municipal building.
Yes.
And I noticed that at least two are missing. The DPW building, library, we're missing. The only reason I raise that is, would it be possible for us to even say...
The DPW library is here.
I'm sorry. The DPW building is missing. Would it be possible for us to use that additional account at like a school or something, for example? I don't know that DPW would need it, but I mean, in the case of an emergency, or I suppose, or something, you know, an issue, it would be probably good for them.
What do you mean, the DPW building?
Like, on North Ave.
On North Ave. Okay.
Yeah. I'm not seeing that here, unless I've missed it.
I'm not sure if they're there now. It might be another cable company. Do you know? Tom? No. I can check into that for you.
I just know, because, yeah, they're saying they offer to every municipal building will get one. So I thought, if we could use that at DPW, or perhaps I do it at the school, one of the schools or something, why not be able to identify that on the exhibit?
Okay. I will look into that for you.
And otherwise, I assume that Tom Mullen is in the thorough job of going through it, so.
Yeah. He did.
Any further comments? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Thank you very much. Personnel and appointments. We're going to be advertising for the Charter Review Committee.
Yeah, there is, I believe, one position available, as we have a new member, Bob Wood, so she is, can only be on this board, and she'll only be on this board. We will advertise for that position, as is our policy. We need the board approval to do that, though.
There are a motion, please, from the floor, to advertise for the Charter Review Committee?
The move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. We are now down to item number seven. Comments or matters not anticipated by the chairman within 48 hours of the meeting. Comments from around, let's start with the left.
Is this just our comments?
Yes.
This is what it is. This is what it is. It was an addendum matters.
Yeah. It was an addendum matters.
Mr. Mullen feels that language is more within the spirit of the open meeting law.
Excellent. Okay. Just wanted some clarification on that. It did catch me off guard. I didn't know what that wording was. All right. So just your comments going around. Just comments. I'm prepared this time. Good. I didn't know what that was. So just a couple of things. I just wanted to point out, this is a great meeting. Every single business that ever came in front of us today was woman-owned. And I just want to recognize that, that we, as a board, as we talk about our visioning, I really want to be respectful and mindful and help the women-owned businesses that are in our town as much as we can. So I just wanted to highlight that, because Wendy, Farmer Market, Leanne, Nancy, all women. And so as we talk about openings on our boards, like Charter Review, I want to be mindful of highlighting and promoting women in our town and serving on some of those boards. So just those two points. And then the other point, Ramadan starts on Saturday. It is the Muslim fasting month, so for everyone out there who is fasting, have an easy fast.
Thank you.
Just very briefly, I was really happy to hear that Mystic Valley Charter listened to the Attorney General's office in modifying or taking away their hair restrictions that seem to be disproportionately affecting students of color. And I was thinking about it, because I thought if they didn't honor what the AG's office said, I would feel like we, as a board, might have to, I don't know, send a letter or do something if that behavior was allowed, because we give them money. And I wouldn't be happy about giving money to, you know, a school that had a policy that was so clearly disproportionately affecting students of color. So I'm glad they did the right thing.
Thank you.
This past weekend, I had the opportunity to go to the fundraiser for the Fourth of July Parade. It is such an important part of our town, and I would just encourage everyone to do everything you can to support the parade and the efforts through the West Side Social Club, as well, the children's programs, the fireworks, because it's part of what makes Wakefield such a unique and great place to live. So I'd ask everybody, if you haven't already, you know, support them any way you can, obviously attend the parade, too. And I think you'll see most of that, all the Selectmen and women doing it as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Tony?
This weekend, we have Memorial Day weekend. If everybody could just take a minute or two to reflect upon what that day actually means, and just thank the servicemen out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'm glad we didn't do away with the comment section. So this Wednesday, Friends of Lake Quanapawett is the annual meeting. It's May 24th, Wednesday, 6:00 o'clock, again at the Bear Hill Country Club. So tickets are still available. Go to the website, go see some active members, and just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before I make my comments, do you have anything? Yes, a couple of quick things. The final audit in the Galvin School should be going into Galvin, going into the state within the next three or four days. We're all set, on time, on budget. The state looks like they're in very good stead with us, which I'm very happy about. I'll be going in, and I'll invite anybody who wants to come in. There will be an actual hearing at the school building authority, where they kind of go through the whole thing, and they like to hear what our experience was with them, which I think turned out very good. So I'm very excited about that, because that is kind of our final resting place there, that the state approved, but we thought they would have approved. They're not going to, you know, come back and try to claw back some money, so that was a good project, and a lot of good work was done there. The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is that if the board will let me know, I would like to perhaps invite a gentleman named Mark Faverman to come in here and talk a little bit about visioning and what we can do going forward. So if the board would let me know that, I can get him in at a future meeting, because I think it's important that we move forward with that personally.
Very good. Do you need...
Just, you just tell me. Yep. So let's make that happen. Please. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I just have a few things that I'd like to bring to attention for Mr. Mayo to move forward. I'm going to ask that we put together a group for the review of the signed bylaw that exists currently. I'm going to also ask for the formation of a review committee to go, to look over the plastic bag issue that was set into our charge. True discussion through Mr. Mayo and myself. I'm going to ask that the Selectmen form quarterly forums, with the first one being June 21st, if I'm not mistaken. That's what was set up. Forums, public participation forums, if they have questions. There are a lot of questions being asked now. Let's take one, for instance, would be, how the tax rate is set, and how come it's not 2.5% when they actually get down to the end? Why is it 4.5%, 5.5%? So issues like that. So having someone be able to personally address those concerns, so have a forum for it. Are the two meter system for the water? Okay. For us to answer that question, it's not, we know why, it's been explained to us, but to give it a 101, you know, a real simplistic reason as to why these things are happening, I think that's going to make a lot of people feel more easy, fully understanding what the process is and when we make these determinations.